First regular meeting in October. That's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the administration report? Thank you. Let's move on to public works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just going to highlight a few items on here. We've had a lot of staff in and out with different trainings this past month. We did complete some installation of the flood signs. We had one that was waiting for a part and some new school zone signs, so hopefully they're all operational now that school is back in session. And other than that, we've completed our evaluations for the year, as well as a few, a lot of little maintenance tasks throughout the city. And if there's any questions on any of the items in the report, we'll be happy to answer those.
Thank you. And also, as noted in your report, and some of the residents have probably already seen, but we have the new mosaic at the corner of Westgate and Jones.
Yes.
Which just got installed last week, I believe.
Yes, it finished, I think, on maybe Friday, when they finished the grouting along the edges and stuff.
Great, thank you. Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. This was like two or three weeks ago, but the, we had an amber light and a red light out at the Meadows by entrance. We just wait on textile or Travis County to fix that?
Austin. It's been fixed.
City of Austin. Oh, no, it has been fixed, yeah. But are we just like, we tell them and then we just wait? And then it just like magically happens one day?
Yeah, so most of our lights are controlled, the stoplights are controlled by Austin Traffic. So we make the reports to them and they come out and they fix them. That in particular light, we're still working on some things with them.
So I've been in communication with Austin Signal. They came out and graciously fixed that one for us, and they're going to put it on their schedule to maintain it, but we have to re-sign the, there needs to be an addendum done to the contract.
Because it was not part of the original contract. It was added much later.
No, that's cool. All right. I had sent you a message about the 311 service, the, like the online one doesn't seem to work. Like, I just get like an oops every time I try to submit something.
I don't know, because I've received several others from other people.
Maybe it's just me. And then the Engagement HQ also is like Granicus working on, this is actually for admin, I missed it, with like the double and triple posting and then city staff having to like post for people. Are they working on that?
Yeah, that seems to have been, that seems to have happened two meetings ago where there was just issues of, of members of the public, residents posting the comments and then not seeing it. I think what was happening is there was, you know, there was, there's a, there was a moderation feature turned on, and I don't know why it was taking so long to appear. So I just turned the moderation feature off and there's, there's, I've been getting no reports of issues. There was a resident having an issue last week, but staff tested it and it worked fine, so.
Yeah, I haven't posted since it started.
So, yeah, so, but I haven't, other than last week, I haven't heard, like, no one had an issue this time posting, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton?
I had two quick things. One, I wanted to say that the, the new mosaic at the corner of Jones and Westgate looks great. It really pops out at you when you, you come up to the, to the intersection there. And secondly, since you mentioned Betty Grubbs, I wanted to say that I get a magazine from UT about a month ago, and it had a very nice tribute to Betty Grubbs in that magazine. As many of you know, she was a contributor to UT and in particular supported the UT women's basketball team, and it was really kind of nice to see that.
Thank you. Any other questions for public works? All right, moving on to public safety.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Officer Brownlow standing in for Chief Carter tonight. In regards to camping in our city, our green spaces, currently there's no known camps. We've been working with people experiencing homelessness and trying to get them connected when we do make contact with those folks. Something additional that our officers are doing, we have quite a few going to training for mental health officer certification, and that's going to help with connecting folks with help and, and also, you know, getting them assistance they need. Traffic concerns on Jones, we kind of looked at it. We, we're going to have a preliminary meeting with a traffic engineer tomorrow to see if anything is feasible with getting that stop sign at Sunset Trail North in Jones. Once we get that kind of looked at and also maybe some improvements on the lanes and stuff like that, where Sunset Trail South in the way is, we can bring that to council, you know, kind of a plan for that. Lastly, the Fowler's Family Cemetery, that's right next to Home Depot, there's a kind of a area that's overgrown and we've had homeless camps open up there and some crime has been kind of used out of that area from Home Depot and theft and such. So we're going to be cleaning that space up, making it really nice. Home Depot is actually donating about 400, or I think it's like 240 feet of fence for that project. And so we can continue to maintain that and maybe have a ceremony of some sort for the reopening of that. And that, that will be in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Johnson?
Sure. This one kind of skirts both public works and public safety. The, the speed sign on Sunset Trail, are we just waiting on a new battery or?
On Sunset Trail, there's a part that we're still waiting on. It's a little bit intricate, and so it's not just a battery issue.
Can we swap another sign to that one? That, that is literally in front of the person's house that wanted the speed signs. It's the only one that doesn't work. So wherever, if you got to take it from Reese or wherever.
I can take it from somewhere else and put it in that one. Yeah, it's, that's no problem. Should be good.
Thank you.
Councilor Rosengard?
Officer Brownlow, last night when we were coming back into the city on 290 Service Road, we almost hit a homeless person. They were right in the street. And then we left, went to another location, came back in, and there was a person on Brody, same thing. We don't know if it was the same person or not. They had a dark t-shirt, dark pants, and they were on the road with traffic.
Yeah, we certainly.
And that was about 11 o'clock last night.
We were getting a call about an individual doing the same thing, and early this morning we had who we think is the same individual knocking on vehicle windows and such. We had a active criminal trespass for that individual, and officers were able to make contact and kind of get him out of that area, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for public safety? All right. Council, we're going to move on to item number four, which is a public hearing and possible action for a short form subdivision at 792 Oakdale Drive under section 150.303 of the Land Development Code. I'm going to open up the public hearing at 610, and we'll hand it over to staff for this item.
Mayor and Council, Jerry Restov and Development Services Manager. As you stated, this is approval of a short form. We're final with our preliminary subdivision at 792 Oakdale. The property is not being cut up into more than one lot. It is an existing property today. It is simply being made, determining what we call legal status as a legal subdivision, which is a requirement prior to getting a development permit. And so this just makes the existing property legal in the eyes of the city.
Any questions, Council, before I open up for public comments? All right. If you wish to speak to this item during the public hearing, please go ahead and step up to the podium. All right, well, I'll close the public hearing at 611. And Council, now we can take action on this item. Councilor Rosengard?
I move to approve.
Is there a second for that motion? Got two seconds, whichever one Secretary saw first. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion passed. And then Council, we're going to go into our next agenda item, which is presentation discussion and possible approval of an ordinance adopting water, wastewater, solid waste and drainage utility rates for residential and commercial customers of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2024. So Council, I put this, this item, typically we usually actually have this after the budget adoption, but I wanted to make sure that we highlight this and give as much opportunity as possible for comments and feedback. And then, of course, if we decide to make changes to this, it'll affect the budget. So I thought it'd be useful to have this discussion before we go into the budget discussion itself. But if we decide to take no action on this, then we can talk about how we do, you know, the budget itself and what consequence that may be for future meetings. With that, I'll hand it over to staff for an introduction to this, and then we'll open up for council discussion and questions, and then we'll open up for members of the public to speak and address council.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll speak briefly to this, but we do have members of the public. So as Council has been discussing, discussing over the past year, possibly even over a year, on considering changes to the utility rates to water, wastewater, and solid waste. We have not analyzed drainage utility rates at this time. So in the mayor's proposed budget, there are changes outlined on a page that staff created on the website that was linked to the backup. So the major changes are using the following recommendations, which is create a meter-based rate structure as recommended by the Texas Public Utilities Commission and the Texas Rural Water Association, TRWA, creating a five-tier water volumetric rate system, eliminating the no charge for under 3,000 gallons of water usage, increasing the monthly base water rate from $9.14 to $11.06 for most residential customers, those residential customers on that lowest and the standard residential meter size, the five eighths, yes. Increasing the monthly base wastewater rate from $4 to $7, increasing the wastewater volumetric rates by $1, and finally, increasing the monthly charge for solid waste, solid waste services from TDS, from $9.13 to $12.73. And as part of these changes, Mayor, Council, and staff have worked on creating a customer assistance program to assist lower fixed income residents. This program would mirror the City of Austin's program and all of the requirements and documentation needed for, the City of Austin would, would apply to the City of Sunset Valley Customer Assistance Program. So there's really no, and as, including the backup too, is the recommendation from the Budget and Finance Committee, which they met on July 25th, I believe it, somewhere, I typed June, that was a typo, but yeah, their, their final meeting considering, or making recommendations on the FY25 budget was July 25th. And their motion was to hold the rates for water and wastewater until, until the next year and until there's possibly an increase of wholesale water, wastewater rates passed by Austin. The committee also recommended to council, as long as the general fund is growing, no increase to water and wastewater. And the committee did not support the 10-year plan as presented in the, as the outcome of the work sessions with city council. So staff is happy to answer any questions. There's really no further data or to introduce at this time. Councilor Rosengard?
I agree. I also do not back the 10-year reduction in subsidies, where we are totally reducing subsidies. We are a fortunate city. We're able to have national night out dinner events, winter sultus events, arts festival, spring fling, Cajun dinner, Spanish dinner and dance, and other events. We contribute to the PTA for the elementary school each year, increasing that amount. We contribute to the Sustainable Food Center, and we also last year approved Prairie Restoration. Yeah, Prairie Restoration. Yes, the Budget and Finance Committee talked about the first 3,000 gallons not being an incentive, since a household of one to two can meet that incentive easily, so it's not really an incentive. A household of five could never meet that incentive. However, their final vote was simply to work on solid waste at an amount to increase of $6. Some folks are on well water and can keep their trees alive without affecting their water bill to the city. The Meadows is in an HOA that mandates a certain percentage of turf grass, and we all want to keep the trees alive for our tree city. Thank you.
Any other discussion from members of council before opening up for the members of the public to speak? Or question staff? Councilor Medicas?
So I was just looking at the report that was online, the backup, and according to that, we haven't had any increases since 2015 to water and wastewater base rates. And then I was looking at the, the comparison, residential customer using 9,500 gallons of water and 6,500 gallons of wastewater, and comparing with the increases from fiscal 20, 24 to 25, if the increases took effect. And the increases are like, the differences like water base, $1.92, volumetric rate, $1.50, wastewater, $3, volumetric rate on wastewater, $6.50, and solid waste, a difference of $3.60. So I just want to make sure that's accurate.
Yeah, based on that kind of customer kind of scenario right there, and we've gone through and calculated some individual, like actual household rights. And so depending on water usage, those numbers will change. So if you use less water, you'll have a, it'll be less of an increase in some instances, and some instances it might be more of an increase, just depending on water usage. That really is the driving factor of, of how much the increase is.
Thank you.
I had a question in terms of, do you know the last time we increased our volumetric rates? Like the rates that we use for, that we charge for volumetric amounts?
Probably the same year.
Same year.
Yeah, I think nothing has changed in 10 years.
Yeah. Thank you. Councilor Rosengard?
Yeah, I want to just clarify, nothing has changed in 10 years, but it's not the fault of council being, showing fiduciary responsibility. Because I remember, and Councilmember Medicas remembers, that we said any increases in water and wastewater and solid waste would then be passed on to residents at that time. And we were told that nobody made a motion, and yet I clearly remember that that was mentioned and that was motioned. I just haven't had time to go back and watch all the council meetings to see that this affected.
And let me clarify, there have been increases in solid waste, and hacking water and wastewater rates have not changed.
Okay. I also wanted to ask a question. I went to the backup in the utility link that was attached, and one of the proposals that you're, you're suggesting is that we go per, per two entities that are recommending this, that we go to the meter size versus using a base rate for water. In table 29, current and proposed monthly minimum rates, right now, we are being charged $9.14 on residential base rate. And if we switch to meters, per the backup, it says it really wouldn't affect anybody's rate. But yet I see proposed monthly minimum rate of $26.22. Residential cost difference would be $17.08 per household.
Right, that is.
Those are the, if, based on the cost of service, that's the cost of service information, based on the actuals from, I believe it was probably FY22 at this point. Based on that, the proposed minimum rate would be $26.22. The current base rate is $9.14, which is a difference of $17.08 between what would actually cover the cost of service and what is currently being paid. But we are not proposing a $26.22 rate at this point in time. We're just proposing an $11.06 rate.
So if council, if the majority of council tonight said to switch from base rate on water and go to meter size, you're saying that it would be $11.
And six cents.
And six cents.
Yes, because we're not trying to bring it up to the actual cost of service in one year. It would be possibly, depending on what council decides, it more of a gradual kind of shift to that. And either way, I mean, this, the meter size base is recommended by the Public Utility Commission, the Texas Rural Water Association, because it is a more defensible position for rates and how you charge rates. And so the idea would be that over time, some of the commercial meters also, which very few commercial businesses have a residential sized meter, would kind of reflect those meter prices too over time.
Does Austin use meter size, or do they use base rate?
They have a base rate. And I believe it's, I do, I'll have to double check on Austin, because Austin's not a good comparison for Sunset Valley, because Sunset Valley, Austin has hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of customers versus Sunset Valley. So if you were going to compare systems, I would recommend comparing to systems like Rollingwood and things like that, that are actually more comparable to a Sunset Valley system.
Do you know if Rollingwood is on meter base, or if they're on base rate?
Let me answer that real quick. I can go up to that real quick. I believe they have, and I know they have a larger tier structure. They don't have just the few that we have currently. Sorry, it's way up here. Let's see. Rollingwood, yes, they have meter-based rates. Rollingwood, Travis County, Improvement District 19, Mid-Tex, all of them have meter-based rates, same with Creedmoor, Travis County Control District, District 10, which some of these are, let me see which one Westlake Westlake is water, is, is the Water Conservation Improvement District 10, so they have meter-based as well.
Councilor Medicas?
So a couple other things in the report that was linked to our information. So solid waste services, so that's a contract. It's not, it's not where, where the water system and the wastewater is, things that we have to maintain internally.
Right.
It's not just a contract.
Correct.
Where we pay somebody else to do it. And from what that said, each month, the city's charged $30.39, but we charge customers $9.13, so we're subsidy of that is 70%. Is that correct?
Pretty, yes.
And then the other thing that I thought was interesting, which I'm not sure is legal, maybe our attorney could tell us, but our commercial customers pay rates that cover the cost of the provided service for water and nearly all for wastewater.
Yes.
Can we have different rates for commercial versus residential?
I would ask legal that question. I think, I mean, cities are allowed to, municipally-owned utilities are allowed to set their rates. What is definitely prohibited by law is that we cannot, so for example, if the city ever, the city will be at some point in the near future providing water to residents on Country White Lane. We cannot charge them different weights than what we charge every residential customer. I do know that there's case law for that, but I'm not sure if Darren has any other information on. Kansas City charge the commercial district the full cost of service for their use of the utilities and charge a different rate for residential customers. Has the microphone down too?
I'm unsure if, I haven't had the opportunity to research that, but I'd be glad to take a look at that and get back to you as soon as I can. I don't have the answer off the top of my head, I'm very sorry.
Thank you.
Councilor Rosengard?
We had a water state, a water study done previously, and the auditor who did the audit for us said we're a very fortunate city. And he said, and the reason we did it is there was the concern that the commercial was being charged more and thus subsidized in the residential, and that was not the case. And he did not have any comment as to whether it was illegal for us to charge 100% to commercial and subsidize residential. And I know the City of Austin has previously subsidized residential, because I used to live in Sunset, in Austin. Thank you.
And I do know that Austin does have different rates for commercial and residential, obviously. But they have to be supported, they're supported by whatever the cost of service is in those, in those rates and how those rates are structured.
Are there questions or discussion from council? Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, I'll jump in here. Nothing, nothing really planned. I read, I read the comments. I'm interested to get more comments here. I'm willing to hear some alternatives, but I just feel we're going through another summer here in Texas where it's just not raining that much. And when you want to kind of curb someone's behavior, you put a price tag on it. I just, I mean, it works. If, and what I said the last meeting about solid waste, we don't really have a land problem here in Texas. So if it's just a money thing, I'll budge on that. I'll do the complete opposite of what Budget and Finance did, but we need to use less water, and we need to pay for the system that we do have. And if the HOA says that you got to have this and that, I think, who runs the HOA? I think it's the HO's in there. So maybe you can change the rules about it, because Central Texas is going to change, so I don't know when you want to do it, when all the trees are dead, because we've spent all the budget on water. So I, I like the idea of bringing back the 3,000, under 3,000 gallon one, if that is like, go ahead.
Go ahead.
That's awesome. Because I do think that is kind of like a, you know, something that you can get people moving, but overall, the same amount of money's there. So I don't know if all the other bands shift to make up for it. We would never hit that. I mean, we got five, five people in our family, but I, I know that there's like one and two household houses around here, one and two-person households. So I want to hear more ideas out here today, or up here, or out there, or over here, to kind of wiggle it about. But I mean, the numbers are going to have to move eventually. So, I guess we'll start today.
Did you want to speak, Carol? Okay, thanks. Councilor Medicas?
Based on some of the comments, there was some mention of bonds. And I thought at our last meeting, it was made clear that we don't really have the ability to do bonds because we don't have property tax. Is that correct?
I was, I don't know if Darren wants to speak to that. Our legal team was going to look into that. I don't know if you had a chance to speak with Barbara about that, but she was going to look into that. Okay, go, yeah.
Councilmember, I would say generally speaking, you cannot intermingle debt service and operations. So you can do a general obligation bond, which is backed by property taxes, or you can do a revenue bond, which is backed by revenue from the utility. The issue is that currently, the revenue from the utility does not cover operations, therefore it is impossible for, to cover both operations and debt service unless there were some change in the policy made now or in the future. So if you're not even covering your full operation costs, it's impossible to go out and get a bond, to sell a bond, because you're not even covering your operations, let alone the debt service.
Okay, just want to clarify, clarification on that, thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for members of the public to speak. If you wish to speak, go ahead and step up to the podium to address council. And did we get any cards or anything?
Yeah, we did get one card if we want to let that resident speak first.
Okay, you're, you're deferring.
Randall Rosengard, 25, Yellowtail. Mayor, Council, city staff, fellow citizens of Sunset Valley. I do have a few prepared remarks, but I want to respond to some of the give and take. Aside from turf grass, we're on clay. We need to water our foundations as well. Trust me, I'll pay a lot for water to keep my foundation from cracking and moving. It's just a requirement. Otherwise, $60,000 to jack it up, put in piers down to bedrock. I am against any reduction in the subsidy, and it's my understanding in past council meetings that I've attended before, that, you know, we've kind of settled on a $500,000 cap on that subsidy, whatever it costs across the board. And I thought that that was a pretty good compromise. But I recently read a resident's draft comments on an email, not sure that it got through, so I wanted to give voice to them, and I concur with the logic of them. Not going to read them in their entirety, but just that portion, which I also support. There are, have been subsidies for rainwater collection systems, large appliances, solar panels, art fest, farmer's market. The water subsidy is much more egalitarian, this is why I read, you know, I don't use big words like that, egalitarian than these other subsidies, as they are, they apply to all households regardless of wealth. Note too, that Note too, that larger households already pay more per gallon than smaller households due to the progressive nature of the rates. So families with children or live-in parents pay more per person for a gallon of water than single or dual resident households. This should be fixed. Additional quote, "The money collected by Sunset Valley belongs to all the residents. To change the rules that were in place when people moved here should at least be done with a vote of the residents. If people think subsidies are unfair, then we should eliminate them all and reduce the sales tax back to what it was when I moved here, 7.75%. If it's merely a matter of resources, then perhaps we could reduce some of the large multimillion-dollar projects that Sunset Valley is considering, like Reimagine Brody. At a minimum, give us a say in what gets subsidized, either by poll or by vote." And then my comments are, it has been noted by members of the Public Works Committee that Sunset Valley spends excess money on engineering, much of which is for concepts never implemented. For a city of our size, we are blessed with sales tax funds that pay for police force and city staff far in excess of the average staff-to-resident ratios. We entertain spending $19 million on a road that is eminently serviceable in its current state. We can afford to approach projects by first imagining what we want without regard to cost, like roundabouts. Whereas most cities prioritize urgent needs, establish a budget, and find funding typically debt. Our rebate subsidies are meant to encourage social change to affect energy consumption. Given that citizens have amassed a record-high debt, $17.8 trillion in the last quarter, mortgages that form 70% of that debt, and credit card debt, an average of $6,501 per cardholder. Perhaps our social engineering should be geared toward easing that burden. A citizen opined that utility subsidy needs fixing in order to get the math right. Perhaps they meant to get the math correct. What is right is to give the shoppers in our city a tax break, if not to distribute a benefit equally to all residents. As a final note, I recall finally and promised Mary Black, as she patted me on the back, that I would continue speaking up against and reducing the subsidies. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Next person.
Lisa Cobb, 22, Lovegrass. I'd like to say that I do support the recommendations made by the Budget and Finance Committee, and then all comments is made by Rudy and Randy Rosengard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Polis from 20 Lovegrass Lane, and we're one of those ones that got our foundation fixed. Yeah, so it's expensive. And we are very big on conservation. We use as little water as possible. And as you know, we're reduced to one day a week. Now, our lawns are burned up already, and so just to increase the water usage rates is just adding in, you know, what injury, well, insult to injury. I don't know, both are the same. But I do support what he just said. And it's tough out there. Homeowner insurance is going up, all kinds of, so many things are going up. Just the electric rates, all that, and we conserve on all, well, everybody knows, we're big conservationists. So, I mean, we had 13 water barrels in our yard. We have, you know, looking at rainwater collection. Is that a thing that tells them to sit down? So we love Sunset Valley, and one of the reasons we came here was that it treats the residents very, as special people. And we're part of 900, I don't know, are we 900 residents still? Oh, I thought we had 900 on our sign. Anyway, I hope to be buried in your little, your little Sunset Valley cemetery. I'd like to see more of that over there. Because this is where we're gonna end our days, is in Sunset Valley. And we love this place. So I'd like to stay. So, do what you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ariel Cloud, 1038 Sunflower Trail. I'm here tonight as a resident, but mostly as the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee. So I want to make sure that our position on this is clarified a little bit. First of all, I want to thank staff because I think we've worked hopefully from their point of view too, but from my point of view and committee's point of view, we've worked very well this year, and we've tried very hard not to give staff extra work, and staff has been very, very, very good to us. So I'm clarifying the minutes because if we had had an opportunity to meet, we did not meet last week because staff floated the idea of not having a meeting because they had to prepare all this for y'all tonight. And we were in agreement with it. But unfortunately, those minutes never got approved. And if they had gotten approved, we would have made a few tweaks to them, because we want you to understand fully how we came to that conclusion. And we came at it from a place of compromise. Because for those of you who know me, and several members of the committee, and there are many new members who actually came around to the same thinking, I was not in favor of doing away with subsidies. And so I moved, and I moved around to a place where we could get to a place of at least yes to several things. One, yes to the rate increase for solid waste, because it's just a pass-through. We have no city employees who are really involved in solid waste. Yes, somebody has to do an invoice, et cetera, but that's not really their full-time job, right? Our issue has to do with several things. First of all, the context for our work this year is the same as the context for our work last year. There were several projects already pre-approved before they ever got to us. So imagine you, those of you who've been on the Finance Committee many years ago and for many years, if you're looking at a number of projects that are in the millions of dollars potentially, and you're told by staff, that's already been approved, that's already been approved, that's already been approved. So we see all these millions of dollars, and I'm not saying they're bad. No one's saying they're bad projects. But they're already pre-approved. So that's our mindset. There must be lots of money here because all these projects for millions of dollars have been pre-approved. Wonderful projects. They're not projects for me because anybody who's seen me over the last two years knows that I have a cane. Anybody who's seen my husband the last two years know he spends a lot of time in a wheelchair. I'm not the only one on our street, and I know I'm not the only one in Sunset Valley who can't really take advantage anymore, unfortunately, of things like trails and parks and all those things. They are wonderful things. What I can take advantage of is what every single man, woman, and child living in Sunset Valley can take advantage of is the water, right? The water and the wastewater, because we all have to use it. And I agree with the comments about foundations. Our foundations cracked from year eight, when our builder had already gone out of business, already gone bust, in the blast bust. So that is important, important consideration. So having said that, that's our context, and we're looking at this, and we're thinking, how can we get to a compromise? How can we be fair, understanding the future? We separated out from the very beginning, like I have always. Conservation and punitive costing, two different things. If you want people to conserve, the bottom line is people who spoke tonight are gonna water however much they think they have to water because they have reasons for it. The same way people who have wells, they're maybe conserving, maybe not, we don't know, because they're not, they're not costing in our system. Other than the fact that all the tube pipes and all those other things had to be laid, and that's a cost, right? And they have to be maintained, and that's a cost. But if you really want to look at conserving water, then maybe you go into something that is a rebate system that everyone could access. Like, as I conserve water, I'm gaining chits for a rebate system. So that when I have to go and do something in the yard, I'll have the money there through that rebate to be able to do it. If you tell me, oh, there's a rebate, you can spend $10,000 on your yard and you can get some of it back. I don't have $10,000 to spend on my yard. I'm retired. I can't do that anymore. When I was working, I could, but not now. And there are a lot of people like me who can't. So setting aside conservation, because conservation doesn't have to be tied to our rates. People are gonna spend water, they're gonna do it anyway. And yes, we need to think about that in the future. And listening to, I want to say the numbers that you're at today with what our costs are, I want to thank publicly Jose from our committee, my co-chair, not co-chair, well, vice chair. Because he did a lot of work on the numbers, and the numbers were wrong. They were wrong over and over again, until we really got to what the subsidy really is. Because there was 800,000, there was like huge numbers. That's not what it is. It's not what it really costs us. What we said is, if we need to increase rates, then we need to look at our whole system of water and wastewater delivery, of collection, the whole thing. Because if I'm paying City of Austin rates, and I am certainly gonna want to know that I have an efficient system, a system where we're not losing 30% of the water in leaks, a system where I have to think about how many employees I employ, about what kind of benefits I give them, because you can't expect the consumer to pay everything that's gonna cost without doing any belt tightening in-house. From Finance Committee point of view, we haven't seen any belt tightening in a long time, in terms of staff and spending. So we didn't think it was fair to do all that on the backs of just the consumers, consumer rates. So what we did say is, and we've heard, obviously, the City of Austin can raise rates at any time, there's a contract, blah, blah, blah. Yes, true. We asked the last time they've raised it. It's been a while. So what we said is, if the City of Austin in the contract raises the rates, absolutely. Let the consumer pay the difference between what we currently subsidize and the new, and the new costs. And everybody will bite the bullet together, and we'll deal with that. But we didn't see the sense in saying, oh yeah, we don't really know how everything else is working, and we're not really sure what our efficiency is, we probably need to do an audit of that whole system, collection, distribution, and see how efficient it is. Not just in terms of the water itself, but all the employees have to touch on it to make it happen. And then maybe at that point, we would, we would have said, well, yeah, okay, now we get it, we're down to the bone, and the city really can't do it anymore. But understand, we're looking at it from, oh, but we have all these million dollars to do this, 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 and that, and we have more employees than we've ever had, and we have this. Why all of a sudden is this need, this pressing need to do a 10-year plan? As I told you all that night when we were in the other room, working out the math, it wasn't just gonna be $20 by the time the 10-year plan was, it's several hundred dollars a month. And we don't really know where it'll go to solid waste, because that increases every year almost. So that was our thinking. We thought it was fair to say, any increases that come in, not increases because we had added employees, but increases that the City of Austin did to us, then those should be passed along to the consumer, to the user. And that was our thinking. And we did say, if we wanted to do something bigger than we needed to do, a full study, not just unclear.
Thank you very much.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26, Reese. So, I think that Ariel makes a lot of good points. And I think some of them could have been answered, and I think perhaps weren't. But apart from that, I do think we need to reevaluate the structure. I think, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm in favor of all of what is proposed, but I do think it needs to be done. I think it's been needed to be done for a long, long time. In 2015, when we did the rate study, that's when, that was when we had the conversations at capping the subsidy at 500,000. And obviously, it was floating up close to a million before things got quote-unquote moved around. So we, so we're not really accounting for that float. And sometimes these are just piles of numbers, and as Ariel said, there needs to be clarity about how those things are shifting, because you can't have apples-to-apples comparisons. But I don't think we should be able to float up to a million when we say we're gonna cap at 500,000, that we should be floating up to a million. And we got a free study. Last time we paid for essentially half a study. And this time we got it for free, so we all saved ourselves 20,000, thanks to the Texas Rural Water Association. But the important things about that are, there are people up in North Texas who are, who can't pay their water bills, because when they're paying full cost, they're paying like $1,000 a month. We don't want to find ourselves in a situation like that and have to do some kind of switch like that when things come down. Because when there's a commercial wholesale customer, they're not gonna do it incrementally. We saw, was it at least an 8% increase the last time we did it? I think that's what it was. It's, so all the studies were on like 3% to 5% to say that we shouldn't keep the well, and then we had an 8% or 15% jump, I forget which it was. But anyway, we are always gonna subsidize the infrastructure. So when people say we're gonna reduce this, we're gonna eliminate the subsidy, that's not true. We can't afford. So we're always talking about subsidizing infrastructure. And the infrastructure is expensive, and we can't get, we can't easily get bonds. We have a pay-as-you-go situation. So we need to be respectful of that if we're looking forward to the future. And I think we all want to do fiscally responsible things and look forward to the future. A lot of the delta in that 500,000 is wastewater. So when you have people who are using high amounts of wastewater, water which leads to wastewater, that's a place it jacks up. So we need to look at the structure so that we're paying attention to that. We do need to look, I think it's a good discussion to say, how are costs from staff doing that? And if we don't have that information, then we should have that information, so people feel good and we're moving together. You know, I'm not in favor of us making changes that aren't, that aren't clear to people as to why we're making them. I think that's important. I think education about this is important. And if we have to chew a little less to get the structure right, then we should chew. But I think that's why I was in favor of having comparisons to either a small city like ourselves that is local, that pays, that shows that. So we can show people how much of a subsidy they're really getting. Because if you compare to Austin, which is not quite an apples-to-apples comparison, high-end users here are getting humongous subsidies compared to the lower-end users. And so, and that affects it too. So we need to be able to show that in our figures. And so I think that that's part of, part of the confusion, because then you can say, yeah, you're still getting a huge subsidy. And I think that's why I like an apples-to-apples comparison. So you can say, here's Rollingwood, and we're comparing here's City of Austin, and we're still gonna be getting a huge subsidy. We're never not going to. We're Sunset Valley, that's what we're gonna do. But we need to be more reasonable about this. So that's why I wanted to have structures that were easy for people to see, you're still getting a huge subsidy here in Sunset Valley. We're still gonna take care of people, but let's make it more equal about how that is, and let's be able to show, essentially show our work. So I do think we need to do that, because I don't think we should be able to go from, when we're saying we're doing a 500,000 cap, and then we float up to a million. That's not right either. That's not good math. That's not being good stewards of our money. And because we don't, most utilities make money for the city, we're never gonna be that, we're never gonna be that utility. So we're not gonna be able to do that. We don't want property taxes. So it has to kind of give somewhere. So being solvent helps us keep not having property taxes, keeps us not having bonds. And I don't think that the small amounts and the incremental amounts that we're talking about are disrespectful of that fiscal responsibility that we've always tried to strive for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jose Flores, Curly Miski. So two things. First of all, regarding, this isn't in response to what Melissa said, it's gonna sound like I already wanted to say this, but independent of the rates, any kind of rate changes, the structure for the volumetric rates works really well as it is. I don't know who decided this, but as simple as it is, it is, it ends up being almost kind of beautiful, number-wise. If you look at what the revenue is versus expenses, it's almost always very close to parity every year for the contractual wholesale purchase of wastewater versus the revenue that's brought in from utility sales, right? It's, it's very close, like within 5%-ish for most of the years. And the new, the newly proposed rate structure is both more complex and requires support on the low end. Those are two, two things that are generally not indicative that you're going in the right direction. Generally speaking, simplicity is better, right? Not having to have an exception case for low-income users is better, right? There's a chance, by the way, that the community supported, the community support would not just be you- just be used by those who need it, but by anybody who could qualify based off of income, right? You know, you can have a low income while you're retired and have plenty of assets. So first of all, the rate structure as is, I think is good, independent of any kind of increases. So please, please at least consider keeping the rate structure not re-architected. Secondly, I'd like to talk briefly about, to put forward a personal opinion, that was not in consideration, was not something that we considered in budget and finance, but it's kind of my own personal opinion. And that's that this city has an opportunity to set an example for other cities, right? And that's based off of two things. One, an abundance of revenue, right? We're very fortunate to have a ton of revenue. And two, we have extra scale, right? This is a very small community that basically do the same fixed cost to support water that a larger city would do, right? Most of the testing is fixed, there's some variableness within that, but a lot of it, any city would have to do it. And us being as small as we are, even small in comparison to surrounding small cities, is something that makes it difficult for us to just pass on a zero-subsidy scenario to citizens, right? So if council members, or if somebody believes that it is borderline shameful that a country with the wealth of the US squeezes its citizens to provide essentials like healthcare, universities, and water, then by extension, you should be a little bit uncomfortable with putting the burden of operational and infrastructure expenses to citizens, right? That is, to create a zero subsidy, which is what the original 10-year plan had proposed. I understand that we're not voting on that tonight, but we do have an opportunity to set an example for other cities that an essential service like water is something that should be provided by the government, right? By a public entity. That's not to say that contractual, you know, the volumetric expenses should be covered, but only the operational and the infrastructure expenses. So, setting that slightly different, if there was a theoretical scenario where we had no sales tax and everything was paid for by property taxes, the city was wholly subsidized by property tax, in my opinion, it was still in the interest of both residents and the surrounding community to have operational and infrastructure expenses paid for through that government entity. And whatever the property taxes would have to be, they have to be to support that, right? So, to not do that, or to artificially narrow the funding sources, is the opposite of what is being stated in the fourth statement of Agenda Item 5, right? That is, to continue the sustainability of water and wastewater, right? If you're truly committed to sustaining, you know, the utility infrastructure no matter what, then of course you want to use every revenue source available, right? It doesn't just need to be a limited few of those things, right? So I'd ask the committee to do the hard thing, which is to leave things as it is. It's easier, I think, to pass new ordinances or, you know, feel good about supporting a particular line of thought, right? I think it's harder to, you know, listen to analysis and, you know, questioning the reasoning from some of these recommendations from the outside, from outside agencies who have recommended that we do certain things that, they may have justification, but it hasn't been passed on to us as to what that justification is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak at this time? All right, council, further discussion on this item? I will, so, this is, as presented in my budget, it is not budget and finance recommendation. I think this is a priority for myself. It is a hard decision for council at this point, right? This is something that is in your hands, although I support the changes that are in my budget, understanding, of course, the additional impact that it'll have to the residents. A couple of things that I'll just point out that, you know, I think have been said, or maybe have not been explicitly said. This is not voting on the 10-year plan. This is voting on a rate increase for this next year, that's setting the rates for this coming up year. Council always has the discretion of, you know, changing in the future where those rates are. Future councils may consider that, you know, this is too aggressive and they want to actually pull back. That's up to future councils. It is not up for a resident vote, direct vote. This is a council decision. We set the policies and the rates. But that is a consequence, you know, that, you know, this is something that council needs to weigh carefully in terms of like how they proceed with this. We have not raised rates on water and wastewater or volumetric rates in 10 years. Rates, you know, inflation has not stalled for 10 years. There is a real subsidy that residents are getting that is increasing every year, that we do not increase the rates. It's about 30% if you go back to 2014, 2015, and you look at the inflation difference between what a dollar will buy in 2014, 2015, and what it would buy last year. So that subsidy is increasing every year that we're doing this, and we're not entrusting the inflation cost for cost of service and operational cost. This rate increase that we're doing this year is about a 35% increase, if you look at the data for some households. So we're essentially, in my mind, somewhat catching up, right, to where we've been not investing in our rates, which would go back into our operational cost. So that's another thing I just want to point out to council, too, is that every year that we decide that we're not doing this because we're doing our study or we're waiting on that information, it's just building up that additional cost that we're going to catch up for. And so I just want to make sure that that's emphasized. That's another reason for me personally why these rate increases are something that I'm in favor of at this time. And so, those are two points I just want to point out. I know this is a weighty decision for council. I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak, and also council, you have a chance to answer questions. We could, of course, you know, go with a different approach. I would recommend, if we do, that we look at considering some of the bullet items that are outlined in the website, and potentially looking at making adjustments or not including some of those bullet items. So if council was going to make a change to the rates, I would like us to, you know, look at these and say, "Which of these are the highest priority?" You know, "Do we want to include a meter base but without changing base rates? Do we want to include, you know, getting rid of the 3,000 gallons? Do we want to include, you know, not changing the volumetric rates and just keeping at, or not changing the rate structure, but just keeping a three-tier instead of five-tier?" So, those are the contexts that council can have some discussions with, or if we want to go back to the budget and finance recommendation, which is only to increase the solid waste. So again, I'm in favor of this. I think it's a chance for us to get back to right size. If I was a resident that moved in here in 2013, which I did, I'm getting a greater subsidy today than I was at that time because of the, just the cost of inflation and cost of service that we're including. Our subsidy this year, we did increase the infrastructure subsidy, so I think our total subsidy is around $800,000, maybe $750,000. And that's after we moved a lot of the items to try to reduce that operational subsidy as much as possible, then there still could be further study on that. But I think everybody would be in agreement that we are subsidizing our water regardless of whatever rate study comes out, right? This is not a full increase to that operational cost. We don't know necessarily what that full increase to that operational cost would be without doing a very detailed cost of service and possibly tightening our budgets or moving things around. But this is, this is, I think can agree that we are subsidizing, that this is not going to catch us fully up to whatever that true cost is if we did that detailed study. This is just an incremental increase that essentially catches us up to where inflation would take us, maybe a little bit more. So, those are my thoughts. Council, leave it to you for further discussion. We'll start with Mayor Potem, and then Councilmember Rosenkorn.
I think there are three things to consider here. Number one, a lot of our infrastructure was built in a 10-year period. That infrastructure is predicted to have a 30-year life. We need to have enough money in our utility fund to be able to cover that when that happens. And so, staff has made a recommendation that we increase the infrastructure utility fund or subsidy to $500,000 a year. That is an invisible subsidy for all the residents, right? That money has to come from somewhere. Hmm? $500,000 a year. Right. No, we've agreed that we're going to put $500,000 a year into the infrastructure utility fund, correct?
Current budget, the mayor's budget, has a $500,000 infrastructure subsidy this year.
Right.
In addition to about a $300,000 operational subsidy.
$400,000 operational subsidy.
So, the total is $900,000.
Right. And so, whether that continues year after year is what staff recommends, is a minimum investment of half a million dollars every year.
Right.
That's up to future budgets, future councils.
Granted, but that's staff's recommendation for what we need to cover our long-term utility infrastructure costs, right? So that is a subsidy to all the citizens. It may be an invisible one. In addition, we have these lower rates, right? And as someone pointed out, one, they had grown to over a million dollars a year. In 2015, council had said we want to cap subsidies at $500,000 a year, and obviously we've grown beyond that. So, I am in favor of bringing up the costs of water and wastewater to at least the point where we're subsidizing $500,000 a year in water subsidies on top of that $500,000 that we're putting for utilities. So, for that, I'm in favor of doing this. I don't know about actually following through with this 10-year plan. But the third part of this is that we know that things are going to change. At some point, Austin is going to come and say, "We need to raise the water rates for water and wastewater." We are in a situation where every year is hotter and drier. That's going to drive up the cost of waters. For example, Georgetown just made an agreement with Roberson County, which is a county that's right up by College Station, to have them ship 60 million gallons of water a year because Georgetown is running out of water. That's not the only community where that's going to happen in Texas. So, a shock in water costs is coming, and we need to be prepared for it. I'm in favor of subsidizing up to a certain point as much as we can for the residents. But we need to, at a minimum, control the cost where it's not just simply going out of control, rising to over a million dollars a year, or whatever. So I like the suggestion by the Chair of the Finance Committee that we look at this holistically as a system and decide what the costs are and what we want to subsidize. But I don't think we can let the cost of this go up year after year and not be controlled, not have a decision made to say, "We're going to cap them at this much," and that we're going to have a plan for when inevitably they do. The other thing that's going to happen is that eventually, we're going to have to negotiate with LCRA for our water instead of the City of Austin, and we're going to be competing with a lot of other small communities. That will also probably drive the price of water up. So I think we need, as, not necessarily something we're going to do, but as a blueprint, a 10-year plan for what we're going to do about the costs of water and wastewater. So I'm in favor for this year of raising the costs as proposed in the mayor's budget.
Councilmember Rosenkorn.
One of the things a resident reminded us is about leakage. In the backup material, it says leakage has been 6% to 17% in the City of Sunset Valley. So that is a great percentage, and we need to make sure that we have money set aside for infrastructure. The mayor set aside $500,000 this year in the budget. It's already there. We have funds that are non-committed. I recommend that we take another $500,000 and commit it to additional infrastructure. Also, we had talked about capping subsidies back in 2017 when budget and finance was tasked with finding money in order to pay for the new police building and the new public works building. Mayor Bruner was on budget and finance at that time. He came up with an excellent spreadsheet where we could play with numbers, and we thought we had it, $500,000 cap on subsidies. But then, my city administrator at that time says, "Oh, no, no, that's not just it. Water, wastewater, and solid waste." He says, "You also have to include infrastructure." Here, we worked so hard to show that the water, wastewater, and solid waste was now capped, and then he added another hiccup, and it just frustrated me to no end because we thought we did a good job. We also have to realize, the residents are speaking and are saying that this proposal is too aggressive. They're asking that it be less aggressive. We also set aside last year a million dollars for rainwater collection. Nobody has taken, as far as I know, taken us up on that. It's simply because it is so expensive to do. Having rebates is a big plus, but I think if we can get a group of residents together to do it at the same time, that we might be able to get a contractor to bring the price down per household. And I think that would be a great way of us utilizing less water. We will have rainwater, and yes, there would be maintenance on your rainwater collection, et cetera, but I think it would be a great idea of an area where to start. So we have a million dollars tied up right now for rainwater collection. Also, in the past, we did ask that any rates, as I said earlier, that were increased, that would also be passed on to the residents. With that, I would like to make a motion. I move that we increase the solid waste by $6 from 913 to 1513, as recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee, that we leave the water and wastewater alone as is, and that we leave the base rates alone as they are at this time, and that we, as recommended per the Budget and Finance Committee, that we review this again next year during the budget. I also recommend within that motion that we continue to cap the subsidies at $500,000 or below. Thank you.
Just a clarification on that last recommendation, capping the operational subsidy at $500,000 or the total subsidy at $500,000? Because it's at $900,000 right now in this budget.
Yes, and I wanted to ask you where that $400,000 came from? Because I know about the $500,000, I don't know about the $400,000.
That's the operational subsidy.
And what line is that under? Can you show it to me? Because I don't remember us talking about that in budget and finance.
So this is the, in the mayor's budget, so the water operational is 209, the wastewater operational 164, the solid waste operational is 64,000. There's a, our drainage is actually a positive, so you have to consider that into the operational subsidy, so that the drainage being a positive actually reduces the total subsidy. However, you do get that total number of 401,701 for an operational subsidy, and then the $500,000 infrastructure transfer.
So to answer your question, Mayor, I was recommending the $500,000 be infrastructure, and I want to clarify, because in the past, when I've made motions, it wasn't clear that the infrastructure is water, wastewater lines, and anything associated with existing water and wastewater lines only.
Okay. So the motion is to keep the current utility rates with the exception of solid waste, and increasing that from $9.13 of this year's rate to $15.13, as recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee, and also as a recommendation to cap the subsidy, I assume for infrastructure at 500K, for future councils, for future budgets. Is there a second for that motion?
Second, it doesn't mean that you agree, it just means that you're open it for discussion.
All right. So the motion dies for lack of a second? We'll continue with our discussion. Councilmember Medikus?
So, it was brought up about comparison with other cities, and I believe in that link to the full report, there was comparison to Rollingwood and all those other cities. I did see that chart in there.
It's on page, I think, 14. It starts on the...
Okay. So I just want to make sure that we know that we did that, that we do have that comparison. And then, the other thing is, what did I have here? Oh, so, I just want to be clear, we're not, before council tonight is not voting on the 10-year plan. Is that correct? We're not voting on a 10-year plan?
That's correct. We don't have any ability to set, unless council, you know, says, "We recommend," or, you know, "We're saying that this is something the city should do," that could be a motion, you know, but it's not officially adopting any rates. It's only adopting the rates for this next fiscal year.
Okay. Just want to be clear, that all we're talking about is rates for fiscal year '25, '26, right now. I mean, as far as I know, that's all...
That's correct.
...discussion. And that we're not eliminating subsidies. So, people are saying we're eliminating subsidies. We're not doing that.
You're not doing it in one year.
We're not doing it for fiscal year '25, '26. So when we're looking at what we're voting for, for the mayor's budget, it's for '25... So when we're looking at what we're voting for, for the mayor's budget, it's for '25, '26, if I'm understanding this correctly.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, '26, then...
No, 24, 25. It starts October 1.
Well, but it's our budget for fiscal year...
24, 25.
Okay.
You can call it fiscal year '25 budget.
Fiscal year '25, sorry. I'm getting my numbers wrong.
It's okay.
But it's for this next year, is what we're talking about. And so I just want to make sure we, I, I want to put it in that context that that's all I'm, I'm in favor of the recommended changes for this next year, '25, 2025, for the recommendations that the mayor has in his budget. And I think it's a good idea during that year, this next year, that as recommended, we do look at the system holistically and, and look at it in depth. We can't, we can't tie the hands of whoever's going to be on council the next budget year, but what we are looking at now is this budget year. We're not eliminating subsidies. We're only doing this increase that is a difference of like, you know, altogether, an increase of, if I'm looking at the difference of, with everything, solid waste and everything, of $19.77. Is that correct?
Based on that scenario, yes.
Based on the average use of 9500 gallons per household.
Yes, and hopefully, they've actually have less wastewater because you should be able to get that number down pretty low for a family during the winter months.
But the chart that you came up with was based on an average.
Yes.
So it's not going to be exactly that, but it's an average. So I just, I'm interested in what we're doing for the budget that's before us tonight. So I'm in favor of the mayor's proposed changes for this next coming year.
Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. We're not even eliminating the subsidy in the 2035 budget. Like, there are, there's going to be subsidies out there. I think, I think this, well, the structure that was proposed, I think it was an attempt to be equitable, correct? You know, just breaking it down a different way. If we saw only volumetric as being a little bit more equitable, I can see how it can be seen as that way. And yeah, you can tell it to me that way. I, I think breaking it down further was just another shot at trying to reflect what you get out of the system and, and how much money you, you will get subsidized. So honestly, I, I don't really... My perspective on this is we would like to see people use less water because it is just going to get more and more expensive. About the zero escaping being like, well, you go $10,000 in and we give you $10,000. I get it. Like, that's why I haven't done it. Because who's got $10,000 laying around? If we wanted to pause a lot of these other municipal projects and just say like, "Hey, let's just get our, like, our water infrastructure correct." You can tell me on that. Maybe we should just buy, buy in tanks for people. Officer Brownlow, you have a water tank at your house.
I have a 31,000 gallon rain tank, and it, yearly, it costs about $400 to replace filters and UV light.
And what size of a, now, that is, that's, that takes up a lot of, a lot of space. What is the square footage of that?
The diameter would be similar to the curvature in this, the council tables here.
Right, so it's, it's not tiny. What kind of a rain event does it take to fill that thing?
For my house, it takes about seven inches of rain.
Okay.
And that lasts six months with...
You still got plenty in there, right?
We're going to be full tonight.
All right, so honestly, if we kept on spending money on, on water subsidies and water rebates and stuff like that, and started putting that, maybe not that scale of infrastructure, but something like that at each people's, each person's house, I'm for it. I just think we need to start paying for the water to, you know, in a way that more reflects how much you're using. That, that's, that's my, my goal, and I want to kind of get us in that direction. Again, I said about the, at the low end, if we don't change all the number... There has been so much work done by staff and Budget and Finance and the mayor on kind of changing the structure. And it is not something that we can kind of re-figure out tonight. But some of the things, if we want to say, like, under a certain amount, just let them go. It doesn't bring in that much money. I know it adds up. Every little penny counts there. If we wanted to take a bigger bite at the volumetric and just put it more into that, and put more of the, maybe like, increase that but not change it for the, for the infrastructure, I'd be open to that. But for me, it's just try to get closer to that $500,000 and try to start changing people's perspective towards using water. This is my, and our, our neighbor left here, but this is my, the water, these water meters are killer, by the way. I found a leak that was using 300 gallons a month when we were out of town. And, you know, 300 gallons isn't that much, but, you know? But in August, I used, we used almost 15,000 gallons. We have very large trees. I live in Sunset Valley. This rate increase will affect me as well. I don't love it, but I plan on living here for 30, 40 more years. And so I am going to feel this as much as anyone else. That's my take on it. I'd like to see some movement pushing them up. Again, if it was a money thing, if it was, if some of the money was unpalatable, I'm willing to budge on solid waste. You know my feelings about that. That's it for now.
And just a couple of quick notes. You know, the idea that we've discussed is, as far as like, providing rainwater harvesting, those things. There are some, you know, physical limitations in some of the areas of the city that make that a little less, you know, achievable, right? So the villas obviously have a much smaller footprint. They can't have a tank as large as, as the council chamber. So I think there's, there's a consideration if we go that route, you know, which I know council member Reitz was in favor of, and that's one of the reasons that we put aside money. And that million dollars is not just for rainwater harvesting, but we, it's generalized for, you know, improvements, like irrigation improvements, you know, reducing the amount of water that's used by the, the household. Those are things I think that council could consider revisiting or possibly changing that rebate structure if we want to try to make, make sure that we're emphasizing that conservation. Also, just another note, I know it came up in the residents' email and also just in your, your, your discussion, that $10,000 is, you know, you don't have to spend $10,000 to get $10,000. You can spend $500 and get $500, right? It's, it's, it is a, whatever you spend, you get, the city will pay for half of it, up to $10,000. And of course, if you're making major changes in your landscape, you're not going to do it for $100, right? You're going to be spending quite a bit of money. But that is also to just inform residents that they can make smaller changes and still get the benefit. They don't have to spend $10,000 to, or $20,000 to get 10, you know, $10,000 recovered. So I just make sure that residents understand that, you know, from the context of what the rebates are. But that's another thing council would consider as well, is that maybe there's a better ratio, you know, that would encourage more of those residents to take advantage of those programs. And with that, I'll hand it over for other council members' discussion. Councilor Medikus?
I just had a question for Carolyn. So there was a big chunk of money put aside for those conservations. How many people are actually utilizing those? Because maybe we do really need to look at that.
I know of at least two households who've made some pretty big landscaping changes. There are some households that's done a little bit smaller kind of thing. And we've had some with some irrigation. But that's all I can recall at this point regarding the big changes. And remember, it's not just rainwater harvesting. It's water conservation landscaping and a whole slew of other possibilities. So those are all that I can recall at this point in time that have made those changes.
So I think it'd be really interesting for the coming year to kind of look at that and, and get the details on who's utilizing what, what's, what's popular. Maybe we need to promote it more and have the Planning Environmental Committee take a look at that this coming year.
That sounds great, and I think also maybe working with the HOA on how we can incorporate that and encourage that more in the other neighborhoods throughout the city.
Councilor Johnson?
The, I, I think kind of hidden in that 10,000, you don't have to spend $10,000, but you're really, I mean, if you want a system that is going to make a dent in your water bill, I think you really do need, we have a couple of water tanks, and, you know, I think it's a 500 and a 250. And those are filled, and after about a week, we'll, we'll go through them, just watering like, just a few beds and a few trees. And that's it. It's not really making, and I think those combined were $1,000, $700 or, or whatever. So I, I think, we also need to structure those rebates so that you are so inclined to get, with the solar panels, it got to the point where it was silly for me not to have them. And they paid themselves off in six years or something. And now we just, our, our utility, our electricity bill in, and we put a pool in, in August was $90. We have a smaller house. I get it. But like, you know, it is, it makes a serious dent in, in your utility bills. This is not where, we're not going to cross this bridge right here. But also adding metal roof, we cannot use the water that comes off of our house because we've been told anyway that, yeah. So it's like regular asphalt shingles, and with a metal roof, we could actually use some of that inside of our house or on the gardens that we're going to like, that consume the food from. And it would be just probably also healthier for the oak trees and the, our cedar, cedars and everything else. So adding that to the mix also would be, would be something. We, we should structure these so that we hit the, like, we're burning through those funds. Like, they should be spent every year. Because these are things that we want. That's why we're kind of subsidizing them.
So I'll go ahead and suggest, council members, any further discussion? Or is there any motion that we want to proceed with? When we do make a motion, we can open up for further discussion, of course. If the motion is seconded, and I will also open up for further public discussion as well. Councilor Rosegarden?
I move that we increase the solid waste rate $6 from 913 to 1513, and that we leave the water and wastewater as it is, and that we cap subsidies at 500,000 or less, and that we move 500,000, that is, non-committed funds, to future utility infrastructure.
Okay, so the motion is to increase the solid waste from $9.13 to $15.13, to leave all other rates as is for the next fiscal year, and also to increase the infrastructure, the subsidy from 500K to 1 million that using the non-committed funds that we currently have in, in general fund. Is there a second for that motion?
I, I have a question about it. I don't know the proper...
If you, you can either, you know, ask your question after...
I guess I can second, and then I'll, then we can talk about it. I'll second it.
Second the motion by Councilor Johnson, and that'll open up for discussion. So Councilor Johnson, you had a question?
So capping the subsidy, we're already over 500,000? Or we're going to pull in $500,000 just for infrastructure from somewhere else in the budget?
For, for waste, solid water, wastewater, and solid waste, we are under 500,000 for what we had to subsidize this last year.
Councilmember, I think you're just discussing the operational subsidy, not the infrastructure. Just the operational subsidy at cap, yes.
We're in discussion. I, I think if you were to ask most people, the subsidy is the cost of all of it, whether they know that there's a difference between how much you use and how much it costs to run it or to keep it up. And so I think that was probably the, I wasn't around when that $500,000 was decided, but it seems like that was the, the spirit of it. Just like, $500,000. And if, if we want to say $500,000 in 2014, in when?
It was around 2017 when we started that discussion.
If we want to say that that is $600,000 now in 2024, 700, and that, and then we explicitly say that that is the subsidy for everything water-related, salaries, LCRRA rights, everything, then I think we're, maybe we're talking, but I, I think, I think $500,000 was $500,000. I think that was what people were thinking back then. Maybe not. The, go ahead.
Well, you, you don't want to set a subsidy and then work, base your rates on that. That is not, we shouldn't be basing our rates on what we want the subsidy to be. You base your rates on, again, the cost to operate the utility and the cost of, in our case, purchasing the, the water and wastewater.
And we're trying to do that?
It's, well, we, we create, you create a budget on, you get the oper, you get the costs, the, you know, the annual costs, you know, projections. Budgeting is always projections. And then you, you know, calculate your revenue. You wouldn't want to say, "We want this subsidy," and then create your rates based on what you want your subsidy to be. Because again, there's one class of customers that's receiving a subsidy and one class of customers that are not receiving a subsidy. Before operation, all customers are receiving an infrastructure subsidy.
You know, we, we all have, we all kind of like, live in our own brains, and we're trying to figure out what we all want out of this. And I think, I think we all want cheaper water because it's Sunset Valley and it's good to be here. And, and so if we said, how many households, 124?
250.
250.
250, sorry, sorry. I've, I've even like, put the mailer, the stickers on before, which comes from our water department. So if we said $2,000 a household, boom, there's your, I mean, I mean, that's almost like what we're, not a check. It's like, that's...
Can't do that. We've already gone down that path and had that discussion. Can't do it.
But that's effectively what we're doing, isn't it? But, but it's a little bit more on, I mean, we shouldn't pretend it's not what we're doing.
It's kind of the same thing as, and if you don't mind, we're discussing. The same thing as our previous city administrator used to tell us. We cannot be a taxing entity, collect tax revenue, and then give it to another taxing entity, Sunset Valley Elementary. Somebody figured out that you can give it to the PTA as long as you don't give it to the elementary directly. Same thing. So instead of giving it to the residents directly, we simply subsidize the water, wastewater, and solid waste. And that's not illegal. We're fortunate, yes.
Councilor Medikus?
So now my, my brain is, is getting all twisted here. But, but there's a subsidy for infrastructure, a subsidy for cost of service, right?
Correct.
And the total of both of those, which are coming out of the general fund to support that, is 900,000?
900,000, correct. In the mayor's proposed budget for FY '25. Correct.
So I just want to make, so the subsidy for the cost of service is 500,000, no.
Four.
400,000.
The infrastructure.
The infrastructure that we put aside is 500,000. Okay, just to make sure I got them in the right call.
Yeah, and, and the operational, yeah, the operational subsidy is something that does fluctuate. And you can see that we've actually reduced it this year. Budget and Finance did some work with staff to make sure that we're moving some of the things that we had allocated there previously over historically, you know, like the rebates, right? For example, those are not, no longer part of the utility cost. It's now in general funds. So that, the actual operational subsidy has gone down compared to previous years, and we've increased the infrastructure in order to make the recommended investment for that infrastructure needs over the next 30 years. The, one of the troubles I see with setting like a cap, you know, which is, you can always play around with those, those line items, right, to a certain extent? So if you get to 500K, well, what, what's to stop a budget from, you know, having a line item saying, "This year, we're not going to include this in our utility cost. We're going to include our general fund." Next year, maybe we move it back, right? Because it, it becomes a little bit more of a trickier situation than just saying, you know, "What we're doing is we're evaluating the rates every year." You know, "We're going to, you know, look at what the, you know, what the, the goals and policies are council, what the needs are from a budgetary standpoint, and make a determination." So I think that's where the, the city administrator is saying, you know, "It's, it's harder to adjust to a cap because the cap is something that you can change based on where you put the line items." And it's not to say that we're not doing the right thing by changing those line items and trying to, you know, tighten that as much as possible, which is, you know, we started that with Councilor Reitz, you know, saying, "Let's really look at what is the allocation of personnel," right? So we, we revised that when the previous city administrator was here. Now we're looking at, you know, specific line items that don't necessarily fall into the utility, and they don't need to be subsidized. They're part of the general fund. So those costs are now part of the general fund instead of, you know, getting the, being captured in that subsidy. So I think those are, you know, things that... in that subsidy. So I think those are, those are, you know, things that, setting the rates, I think, you know, maybe that's a target or a goal that we want to keep in mind as far as like what that subsidy number should be. I just don't want to necessarily say every year we're going to, you know, have this cap and, and try to play around in others because there's different ways of playing around, and the, the rates are going to fluctuate quite a bit, year to year. So that, that's just my thoughts on it. I think that's possibly what the city administrator was also thinking in that regard. Other council discussion on the motion before I'll open it up for members of the public to also speak? All right, at this time, I'll invite members of the public to, to speak again if they wish to, now that we have a motion on the table.
Perhaps I'm confused. But in playing around in this discussion, that scenario, more or less as I understood it, kind of came up. So if we're saying we're capping at five hundred thousand, and again, perhaps I'm confused, that was a delta of what, three hundred and fifty thousand from where we are? Is that correct?
If you're, if you're counting both the operational and the infrastructure subsidies, our total subsidy for the utility fund this year is nine hundred thousand dollars.
Right. So, so if that's what you were sort of doing, then who's eating, if, if the consumer's eating that, then that's a far worse scenario, you know, unless you start playing these magic numbers and you get a desire to do that, that's a far worse scenario than that which is on the table. And, and so that's, that was my concern. And, and so I don't think it's a reasonable proposition, because now we really have sorting costs with that proposition. And so, I mean, that was the easy thing to say. It's like, oh, well, let's cap it at five hundred thousand, that's what we said we were going to do. Well, then who's going to eat all that? You know, that would be us. So I don't think this is a very consumer-friendly suggestion. And, or it encourages people to play, you know, play, play with your numbers so that, so you're not really freezing it. So as I understand it, this is not a very consumer-favorable solution. Perhaps I'm mistaken, if you could clarify.
That's only the water, wastewater and solid waste. That is not the operational cost, and that is not the infrastructure cost.
Okay, well, then it doesn't solve very much. But, anyway, again, it, we have to work with a defensible structure. Miguel wanted us to pay for our structure, Miguel Huerta, who's a utilities attorney, because he says we should go and have this twenty thousand dollar study, which was twenty thousand when, I don't know when. And, and because then we can defend ourselves in court if we do that. We need to have the goal standards. But, but at some point, just like using good general accounting principles, if you're running a public utility, you should be running numbers that make sense, not funny numbers. And so I think that we should be able to, as a city, defend our math, and I'm, and I'm not disagreeing with a lot of the things that Jose and Ariel said. But I, I think we should, you know, I think you shouldn't be entitled to your own facts. I think we should be able to defend this and, and, and look at our subsidy. So I would welcome setting an improvement, because we, we really need to set an improvement to the situation. And then having people agree more on structure, you know, and, and look at it. And, but, but I think we should all be able to say, we run a public utility, we should be able to use our utility in ways that it at least makes sense to other public utilities. And then we can say which things in there we think we can subsidize and, and, and do our best for the residents. But I don't, I've, I've always wanted us to run a decent public utility where we make sense and, and our math makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
From the perspective of budget and finance, the rotating numbers is an ongoing problem. And we've dealt with that every year. And we started off this summer with a set of numbers. And by July, there was another set of numbers. And tonight, there's another set of numbers. So the five hundred thousand dollar in infrastructure, from my point of view, I, I would like to know exactly what we're replacing every single year that costs them half a million dollars. Because when the projects come through, yes, there are some replacement of pipes to such and such street, but there's not a clear picture of how often these thirty-year pipes are getting replaced and what other infrastructure. The problem, and that comes to what Jose speaks about efficiency of scale, we're a city of approx. two hundred and fifty-four households. So that means if you have nine hundred thousand dollars, that you have to divide every single year and growing, that's over thirty-five hundred dollars per household per year, not accounting for the water and the wastewater that you use, right? So there is no way a tiny little city of two hundred and fifty-four households, even if we all paid our everything, could sustain a system where you need a half a million dollars of infrastructure every single year. And I'm not really understanding that. And I'm not understanding why that number changes every time we look at it and discuss it. That should be something, unless you had a major pipe break, or a lift station just went kapui, that should be something that's pretty predictable, as is the number of employees that you need to work the system, pretty predictable. So if that's the case, ladies and gentlemen, then we're better off having the city of Austin provide everything. Because then we could be in this situation with thousands and thousands of other users, and there's an economy of scale. Because two hundred and fifty-four households are never going to be able to pay that kind of money. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I will just, for residents, on page twenty-eight of the infrastructure plan, I believe that's where the thirty-year projections for expenses are, in terms of the utility investment. So that's basing it off of two hundred and ten thousand dollar investment every year. If we kept that number, instead of moving up to a higher number, then we'd start seeing a deficit in the utility fund, starting in, I believe, twenty thirty-eight is when that shows the red number appearing. Is that correct?
Correct. And in preceding pages, it tells you exactly what infrastructure is being replaced.
Right. And so the, the movement towards the five hundred K is really to prevent and, you know, or delay that, that running out of money. And so council always has the discretion to put more or less. This is just this projection based on, and I think Public Works looks, looks at this occasionally too, but this is the, the two hundred and ten K that we've typically done. So that's, I just want to make sure that that's available to the public if they want to reference that information. Other members of the public that wish to speak at this time?
So with regards to the mayor's discussion about the, the migration of numbers, and what constitutes the subsidy and what doesn't, totally agree with all that, right? The subsidy is, is not a science, right? It's an art. It depends on how you look at it. It depends on what gets put into it this year. To look at it as X hundred of thousands of dollars is the subsidy, is, is never going to be true, right? This is the way that we sliced it this year, it may get sliced differently next year. So that, number one. Number two, volumetric is not the issue, right? Volumetric basically breaks even every year. The issue is on the operational side of things. The operational side of things, and then the ten-year infrastructure replacement that we're going to start going through in the twenty thirties, right? We've got about five million dollars of projected replacements that we have to fund from somewhere. Currently, we are overfunding the street fund considerably. That thing grows year after year and continues to. We have a ton of money in there. I think that's part of where some of this, the reimagined Brody thing, which by the way, super excited when I read the pamphlet, right? I mean, it looks great until you get to the number, and then it's a different story. But I think that's where a lot of that came from. I don't think that we would have been considering that if we didn't have, you know, this war chest sitting in the street fund. So we have a ton of potential revenue that we could access by, you know, changing the vote whenever the street fund, you know, whenever the, the taxation structure comes up for agreement. That's a potential source of lots of additional money that could be going to contribute for the ten years of, you know, the ten-year replacement of the utilities. What's that?
It's restricted. The street fund can only be used for.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is eventually the, the, you know, the, the, the structure for what, what funds get what percentage of the top-level taxation, right? Then how that flows into the different funds, that comes up for vote every so many years, right? We can change that when it comes up to vote, to move less money into the street fund. Until between now and then, no, we can't. But that, I think that that comes up in maybe twenty twenty-eight. There's a ton of potential revenue that can be unlocked from there that's sitting stale in the street fund right now. What else? Right. So with regards to the five hundred thousand dollar fee, ignoring the street fund potential solution, you know, the, the reallocation of, of the taxation structure, if the issue is, how are we going to pay for the infrastructure improvements that are coming up in the twenty thirties, then we don't have to add, this is a temporary problem, right? This is a transient issue. This is a transient issue that's going to last for, you know, ten years or however long it takes us to, to do this thing. We can have a separate, you know, potential increase, right? A potential price that's a temporary price specifically to address the, the utilities. It doesn't have to be either, either in, you know, in the temporary base rate, right? Or, you know, just a separate line item altogether. In other words, you know, right now you get a base rate, and then you have a volumetric rate. You could get a base rate and then, you know, a temporary, we're, to the fund somehow, and then a volumetric, but the volumetric is not the issue. Volumetric breaks, breaks even year after year. So just consider that.
Thank you. Maybe I'll switch to speak at this time before we resume council discussion? Councilmember Johnson?
Are there, are there any, are there any taxes that we could be loving that we currently are not?
I'm, I'm sorry, any taxes, sales tax?
Well, so the sales tax under chapter three, twenty-seven, is a quarter of one percent, right?
Are you talking about the street?
Sorry, I'm, I'm talking about the street fund.
Yeah.
So that is.
So, yeah, so the street, the street maintenance tax, the last election was November twenty twenty-one, it expires November twenty twenty-five. So in twenty twenty-five, Mayor June, council will call for the election of, the possible reelection of, of the street tax. And you, you know, council has, since its inception, the street tax has always been set at that quarter of a percent, but that number could be lowered, allowing more funds, more, more of the sales tax flow into the general fund. The council sets the, council sets the, what the percent, if they will reinstate this street tax by vote and the percentage, and then the voters vote on it.
Yeah, I think the only reason to lower it is to allow us to collect elsewhere.
It would just go into the general fund, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, the tax rate set at election by council, again, the combined local sales tax may not exceed two percent.
Okay. This might be a question for Kyle, actually. The Sylvia said we never want to go below the eight and, eight point two five?
Eight point two five.
Yeah. But six, six point two five goes to the state, so the two percent.
But we never want to go below the eight point two five, because then Travis County can come in and say, oh, well, we, because there's like a ton of taxes that they collect, just where they can kind of slide in there. Is that true?
No, because we used to be lower.
Well, but I think Travis County back then offered a lot less services, and probably, or probably didn't realize it. It's not like they're waiting right there.
I think that would, it may take a little bit more research in terms of, you know, is that a possibility? We, we do not fully take advantage of the two percent that we as a city have a limit for.
I, I'm not looking for any more, but I just, you know, if it's going to be collected anyway, then it might as be, be here.
I, I don't think that Travis County would fill the gap, if that's what you're saying. Like, if we don't take the full two percent, then Travis County would somehow throw in another, say we go to one point five percent, Travis County adds another half percent. I don't think that would happen.
Okay. There, there are like twenty different things where, I mean, they're very small percentages where they just kind of throw them in. I've seen the list before. But, but they just currently don't collect it from anywhere in Sunset Valley. It was kind of interesting to, to hear about, you know, when the infrastructure comes due. And there actually is a, a spreadsheet that I've seen before, that it was kind of just like, this is when this line is coming up, this is when this line's coming, and it's like this forty year cycle or whatever.
Yes.
It would be interesting to see how much that temporary, you know, kind of lift in the, the water bill would be in order to kind of like do a five hundred, five hundred thousand dollars also does not go that far. So if we think about putting five hundred thousand dollars away each year, it's surprisingly short how far it goes.
Councilmember Rosen Garden?
Called a question.
All right. So council, the motion on the table is to increase the solid waste rate from nine dollars and thirteen cents, which it currently is, to fifteen dollars and thirteen cents, keep all the other rates as they are in the current budget year, and also to move an additional five hundred K into the infrastructure, or into the utility fund above the current five hundred K. So a total of a million dollars in infrastructure subsidy, in addition to the four hundred K in operational subsidy that's in the mayor's budget. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay?
Nay.
Okay, motion fails. Councilor Medicas?
I'll make a motion to consider and act on approval of ordinance adopting water, wastewater and solid waste drainage utility rates for residential and commercial customers by the city of Sunset Valley, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-four, and terminating September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and including the recommendations as included in the mayor's budget. And that during twenty-five, twenty-six, we take a look in depth at our infrastructure system holistically.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the rates that are included in the mayor's budget, and also to look at our, our, our rates holistically over twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six period? Okay. And I assume that means like a, a rate, a full rate study, trying to make sure that we're, we're completely, this understanding of.
That probably shouldn't be included in this budget cycle. Should be next year.
Yeah, it, it sounds like you're not asking for additional funding this year. It'd be a recommendation for the future council to consider.
Correct. I think we need to, to look at getting that set up for whatever we need to look at for the structure.
Okay.
And, and also our cost of service.
Okay.
And not necessarily be funded in the next budget year, but. Okay, it can be an item for the retreat, as, as council member Rosen Garden just suggested in my ear.
Okay. So the motion is to, is to approve the, the, the rates as in the mayor's budget. There's a second for that?
I'd like to propose a friendly amendment.
Well, let's get it seconded so that we can, we can actually, you know, make changes or vote on it in, in the night. So is there, yeah, is, is that a second, or do you want?
I'll, I'll second, yes.
Okay. That opens up for discussion. Mayor Protim?
I'd like to propose a friendly amendment that we do not eliminate the charge, or we do not eliminate the no charge for under three thousand gallons of water usage.
Okay. So they, there's a suggestion to make a change, but include the current under three thousand dollars, three thousand gallon subsidy, or there's no charge for that, that would change the rate structure for the volumetric rates. Instead of having a tier one, zero to nine hundred, nine thousand gallons, it would be more similar to the tier zero, tier one, that we currently have, but with the new rates. Is that, is that what you're saying? Okay. Councilmember Johnson?
Just a clarification. So currently, you know, there's no, and correct me if I'm wrong, Carolyn, but there's no bait. Essentially, you use under three thousand, under three thousand gallons, you do not pay a base rate. So would it be continuing that where if you use under three thousand gallons, no base rate and no volumetric charge, or just?
Or, I was going to make a suggestion, because you see this in some other, other utilities. Instead of basically having everybody pay the base rate, and then those three thousand gallons are basically the water use that is provided by the city as part of that base rate for all residents.
So no, no, yeah, so there would be no, for, across all residents and meter sizes, there would be no charge.
That's your basic human consumption of water.
For three thousand gallons and under. But everyone would be paying the base rate.
I, I brought this up because I wanted council to consider it. It's, because it had come up several times, you know, the people had suggested it. I thought we should at least talk about it.
All right. So we're currently in discussion for the motion, which has been seconded. All right. So we're currently in discussion for the motion which has been seconded. Council, further discussion and possibly to do this cleanly, I would like to suggest that we take a vote on the current motion. And if it fails, based on the discussion, saying that maybe we should have this, this change, that that be a follow-on motion, just to make sure it's clean in everybody's mind what we're voting on and, and clear to the residents as well.
That's fair.
All right.
So the friendly amendment is...
I think we're not...
Well, it's a discussion at this point, and I would suggest that we don't treat it as like a friendly amendment. I would, I would suggest that if council is in favor of that proposal, that we, that would recommend they, they vote no on the current motion and then create a new motion that includes the specifics about what we're going to vote on. It's cleaner that way rather than trying to do the friendly amendments. So. And if I understand correctly, you, you don't want to make the changes recommended by staff just now. It would just be preserving the same benefit. If you're using less than 3,000 gallons of water, you're not paying the base rate for water and you're not paying the volumetric rate for water. Is that correct?
I think that's something we could discuss if we don't pass the motion as it's currently conceived.
All right. Councilmember Johnson?
What was the customer assistance, I think we set aside 10?
20,000.
20,000, sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
How many, how many people would use under 3,000? I, I mean...
You know, it varies, I think.
Are those the same people? It sounds like they're the same people.
It depends. So sometimes during the winter, there could be quite a few that reach that level.
Okay.
I think one time, I remember Tanya telling me that there was like 70 who reached that level one month during the winter. But generally, it's about 20 households that, that do that on, on the regular.
Okay. Thank you.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26 Rees. I, I like the mayor's idea of that you vote on this. And then I really like the idea that you let finance committee and lots of other people who want to talk about it, talk about it with, you know, like maybe even a subcommittee of people who are interested in this, so that we really get a good, a good discussion about that. Before shooting off the hip, I, I think it's a good thing to consider what staff, so that everybody got 3,000. I'm, I think that's a thing to, to talk about in the big general discussion. But I really do think that I really want everybody to have the same data and all of us to chew on it. I really like that part of the recommendation so that we can come to something that we think makes sense or we can all at least understand where we disagree. So I, I would hate to see something else thrown into the mix when I think we've had some really good ideas that, that I think are worth, I, I really like considering how we look at our subsidies and if we want to change our taxes and, and where we think things should be wiggled by people who think about money well. So let's, let's have a good, robust discussion in, in a thoughtful way. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Counsel, any further discussion before we move to vote on the motion? And I'll clarify what we're voting on to make sure that it's, it's clear to everybody what, what it is. Councilmember Johnson?
So staff spent a lot of time, and we're sorry that all your work is now being kind of like sliced and diced, but this is what I guess politicians do. There's a lot of fundamental changes in how bills are created up there, right? I guess, and I think what budget and finance was asking was just more time to kind of, to shape it. It's ultimately our choice, but I also don't want to be in a situation where we're in a bill structure of A and we move to B for a year and then we go to a hybrid of A and B. I mean, that sounds like a lot of, how much work is up for Lori? How much of work is up for staff? Because like I'm, I'm willing to take this year by year and just like find the right size, but like I don't want to just create a lot of busywork.
Just depends on what, what you, what you all decide. I, I will say the, you know, trying to eliminate the under, having no, no charge for under 3,000 is complicated because that's pretty unheard of in a, you know, when you're doing a billing system. So, I mean, to create a rate system like this, that, that's what the software is designed to do. So, I mean, this is not going to be that challenging.
Okay.
Any further questions or discussion from council? All right. So to be clear, what we're voting on is the motion to set the utility rates that are currently in the mayor's proposed budget. And so this is an adoption ordinance that would raise the base rates, the, the structure, the volumetric rates as proposed. And also there's a recommendation in there to look at our water system holistically, but not provide funding for a water study this year. That's something that would, you know, come up through discussion. This does not include keeping a 3,000 gallon subsidy, right, as we currently have, or, you know, no cost for, for those users that have 3,000 gallons or less. All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay?
Nay.
Okay. So the motion passes. So council, that takes us to our next agenda item, which is presentation, discussion and possible approval of an ordinance adopting and approving a budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 and terminating September 30, 2025, and making appropriations for projects and accounts. And so what I'm going to do is hand it over to the city administrator who's going to go over the list of bring back items for this, this meeting that council has either brought up or that have come up in discussions. And so those are going to be the first introduction. And then we'll open up for council questions and discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I also did want to point out that there was an update to the budget summary at a glance sheet. The expend, the expenditures and transfers in and out are all what was the same as what was filed with the mayor's budget on August 9. The only difference is this, so revenues, expenditures, all the same as in the mayor's proposed budget. The only changes were the projected ending fund balances. We had another, you know, about a month of revenues and expenses, and then Kyle made calculations just on, on trends of what our final expenses would be. So I think overall it was about a $200,000 difference in the, in total, total balance for this city. So, so now I will bring up the spreadsheet with all of the bring back items that have been discussed and briefly summarize. So the personnel items, so, and again, the, the amount column here is what it would change, how it would change the budget and what, what funds it would affect. So the personnel items are the CEC, the now re-titled communications and events coordinator position funded, an administrative assistant, a new position in admin funded, the trail patrol and community resource officer position funded at full-time, and the janitorial position added and reclassified as payroll. It was missed in the mayor's budget that was filed. All in all, with some other changes to personnel, as in there was a, a part-time position that was funded at full-time, a couple of other changes, corrections. Overall, it was a only net increase of 12,827. It was actually a decrease in the general fund and then an increase in the crime control fund of 13,877. So other items, these are two items that were just missed. We needed to increase the operation and maintenance line item for the in-car radios for the police. That's 9,000. That's would affect, only affect the crime control. And another crime control expense is the six-year lease for the Brazos ticket rider machines. And that's about a $17,500 expense, but that is once every six years. Then we would, another item for consideration is funding or utilizing the remaining amount and grant funds received from the American Rescue Act during COVID. And that would be put towards trail sign rebranding. That is the general fund, but again, that's utilizing committed funds, moving them to an expense line item. The sponsor highway, item five, is a new program and it will add funds to the marketing and promotion line item in the hot fund. The city would sponsor a sign along Highway 290. The organization itself actually cleans up the trash, but the city gets to have its, its sign. They've actually already presented me with a mock-up, so it's essentially branding for the city. So utilizing hot funds for that. Parks and open space, this is not, this amount here, the 617,000, this would not actually increase the expenditures. This would just be utilizing committed funds that were set aside, that have been set aside over the past couple of fiscal years for funding parks and open space projects in FY25. This, these include the Savannah Trail, Phase One, and the City Hall backyard. So that's essentially just moving those committed funds and, and utilizing them in the FY25 budget. The sustainable food center was here at our last meeting last week requesting an increase of $8,000 for their hot fund grant. This is for additional, the bulk of those additional funds are to assist with the purchasing of new physical signs for the farmer's market that have updated SFC and Sunset Valley branding. And then there was a discussion about replacing the storage set at the triangle. And rather than that being a, a, a grant or increasing their, their general fund grant, their general fund grant would remain at $10,000. That is to support having the TDS facilities out there, the porta-potties. But the city, because that is the city's shed, I think they, they asked for 32, around 3,200. And speaking with Dakota, we think 5,000 is a good number to get a bigger, better and shed and to put some, you know, safety measures on it to prevent it from being broken into. There was a request from a member of the planning environmental committee to increase the P and E community programs line item in the venue fund, which is the money set aside for prairie restoration, an additional $10,000. However, staff, in, in speaking with the public works director, we're not recommending additional funding at this time, just given bandwidth and staff feels that there's enough in that 40K to fund both the men's task orders and the actual labor of some of the plantings, which will be done by American Youth Works and the Texas Conservation Corps. There was a proposal to put the general fund operating reserve at 18 months. Current financial policies only require the city to have a 12-month operating reserve. Doing this would, doing it to 18 months would require adding about $2.9 million to the general fund reserve. That would put the non-committed funds at 815,251. And that does not include item number six. So if we, if we go with item number six, that would take it down further to under two, that would take non-committed funds under 200,000 for the general fund. There was a proposal of doing an additional transfer for utility infrastructure of 500,000, which would double the utility infrastructure transfer in FY25, making it 1 million in total. Item 12, city council's already voted on the utility rates, so that, yeah. And then items 13 and 14, there were discussions about improve, possible improvements to Jones Road for traffic, especially at the North Sunset Trail and Jones Road intersection. There have been requests to add crosswalks, potentially stop sign. I didn't think we were making a staff recommendation to add a stop sign, but again, we just need to do more work with the traffic engineer. One we spoke with said you cannot put a stop sign at that intersection. So essentially, we just need more time to have more data. Yeah. I spoke with chief and he's recommending a three-phase approach. The first is to talk to the Sunset Valley Elementary School about their traffic plan. I believe Officer Brownlow has already engaged with them. The second part of that plan is to work with the Montessori School on a traffic plan. The chief really wants to get the traffic from stacking up along Jones Road and utilizing that curb cut that they have. And then three, engaging with the traffic study to look at traffic in that, in that area. So those are items 13 and 14 are related on this list. And then in preparing the backup for, for you all this evening, the mayor and I were discussing something that came up at the council retreat in December of 2023, which were, was creating the additional revenue if we did go through with the rate increases, which just passed with the last agenda item, is potentially creating or committing general funds to a sort of community benefit, committed funds. So with the rate increases that just passed, it's about $53,000 in additional revenue. So, you know, council could consider committing funds to, to a community, you know, community benefit program. This is just something that, as, at the retreat was, was mentioned. So I know that was fast and furious, but...
Yes, they missed. I, I don't think it would necessarily change anybody's mind. So council, what we did last year, and I think it's a good way to, to proceed this year is that let's go through and ask questions to staff about any of these items you want to get more details on. If there are new items that you want to add or suggest, we can continue adding to that list at the, at the bottom. You know, and then when we go to make a motion for the budget, what we did last year is we said, including items one, two, five, eight, you know, down that list, even if those items are to remove things from the current budget. It's a, it's just a good way of keeping track of it. For example, if we wanted to not fund or change the funding for a project, you know, it'd be good to track it on the spreadsheet if council wants to suggest that. And then we can vote on the motion or, you know, to say yes or no. And then so, you know, if we want to change things, that's something we can do. So with that, I'm going to let council ask any questions about the current items on there or if they have suggestions for additional items. Let's proceed in that fashion. So, Councilmember Burrow?
Thank you. I have a question. The, the bring back items that are listed here, those included in the proposed budget summary at a glance, rate 29, are they not included?
They are not. So on the, in the backup that was presented on August 27th, we did print three new fund sheets based on some bring back items discussed on the 20th. And the, the only funds affected were general, crime control and hot fund. However, in discussing with the mayor, we felt it was best just to bring back the budget, just to look at the budget. Okay, this was the proposed budget that was filed by the mayor August 9. And so that new budget summary at a glance that was in this, in this backup did not include any of these items listed here or those amounts. So the totals, you know, if all, again, if all of these were approved, these would be the total, you know, the net change to the expenditures would be about $600,000. But, you know, 500 of that is if, if we do an additional 500K infrastructure transfer.
Yeah. And, and that was mostly because when we discussed on the 27th, we had that second iteration of the budget. It, it included the salary changes, but it did include like some of the other things that we caught in the meantime. And so what I wanted to make sure council is looking at is what is the official filed budget, right? And so these would be dealt with from that, that council considers, could consider as part of the budget adoption process. In addition, if you want to make additional items that council can consider as part of any motion, we can track it here even if they're to reduce the mayor's budgets in certain areas, right? These are currently all additions to the mayor's budget, you know, and so there may be other areas where council's got ideas, you know, as far as not funding certain things, and we'll want to track it. Then, like I said, when we go to make a motion, it'd be useful to say including items number XXX from the spreadsheet like we did last year.
And, and just as a reminder, again, so the, the amounts that you see in column C all increase or add to a line item expenditure in the budget except for item six, which is just talking about, you know, committing versus not committing or moving funds from committed to non-committed or to, to actually funding it. And then item 10 also is just, you know, moving funds from non-committed to, into the general fund operating reserve.
Councilmember Johnson?
Of course, I put a cookie in my mouth. You, I'm sorry, Matt, you got the, the thing from Jeff Flowers from Dr. Highway, right? the thing from Jeff Flowers from Dr. Highway, the, the number is six thousand, thirty-nine dollars.
Yes, we did not spend that full, so there's ten thousand in the marketing and promotion item, and we didn't, we didn't spend that full money. So I, I just felt that increasing that line item by five thousand would cover the, the six thousand dollars for that program in addition to whatever other marketing expenses come up.
Thank you.
Councilor Johnson?
Number six has the Savannah Trail and City Hall backyard.
So that's not their, the, this number is not the full total to fund, to fund both of those projects. That is just what is left over in the Parks and Open Space and Beautification Special Revenue Fund that was created, I believe, two years ago? Two, two or three, two, at least two years ago, where we would have been adding money each year. I believe the first year there was
Yeah, so basically, we've set aside money in a committed fashion, and all that's saying is let's uncommit that money and use it on the fun projects. So it's, it's not adding any additional funding. It's just, you know, saying that that purpose of that, that committed funding is now being utilized for its purpose. Councilor Rosengard?
One of the items are used, these are all in the budget already, and all we're doing is, is either pulling something out. Is that correct?
These are, these amounts that you see here are not in the, they are not in the budget.
We have to find money.
No, I'm
Because if we add these.
Yeah, so if we, for example, if we added everything but that five hundred K, we'd have to, it would drain from our reserve, our general fund reserve, thirty-five thousand dollars, right? So it'd be additional expense that we don't have income or revenue, you know, accounted for. Some of the funds, for example, crime control, we've set a target in the past, based on previous council discussion of having that fund end the year at seventy-five thousand dollars. If you go to the budget summary as a glance, you know, what we're projecting right now for the crime control fund is that it'll end with a revenue of eighty-five thousand dollars. So we could actually spend more in those cases and, and still have a healthy fund, right? You know, based on the balance. So in the spreadsheet, we're talking about thirteen thousand dollars, I think, of additional funding. So some of these funds are, we probably don't have to worry about making up that money so much, because we're trying to get that crime control spent, for example.
Yeah, of all of these, you know, if, like the mayor said, if all of these were approved, it would draw down the balances you could, you know, you could see. So the general fund balance end of year projected would, you know, be five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar lower. The utility fund would be five hundred thousand dollar higher. And then the other three affected are the hot fund, the, excuse me, venue fund, and the crime control fund.
We approved everything in the crime control. Instead of eighty-five thousand dollars in the year, it would be forty-five thousand dollars in the year. But again, that fund is intended to be used and spent and, you know, having forty thousand dollars, you know.
The money is there either in revenue or in fund balance to pay for all of these, if, if they're all approved.
Councilor Rosengard?
I move to approve item number one, personnel items. Item number two, radio operation and maintenance. Item number three, ticket writer machine lease. Item number four, trail sign rebranding. Item number five, sponsor a highway. Item number six, parks and open space. Item number seven, SFC hot funds grant. Item number eight, triangle storage shed replacement. Item number ten, eighteen month general fund reserve with the caveat that we take this to the Budget and Finance Committee on their first next meeting and have policy changed. Item number eleven, additional transfer to utility infrastructure of five hundred thousand. Item number thirteen, no money, but send the item to, to Public Works for discussion and research. Item number fourteen, no money, send to Public Works for research. And that's it.
So is this, just to clarify what the motion is, because these are, we could either handle this in kind of two steps. One is a motion by council and a vote by council to say, let's go ahead and add these to the proposed budget, and then what we'd probably need after that is a formal vote on the, the, the budget when including these items. So you want to take it in those two steps, or you want to, is this a motion to approve the budget with these items in addition?
There are some more things I want to discuss, but I would like to have the
These taken off the table, so they were fully approved. Okay. So yeah, I think, I think we can proceed that way. So the motion is to approve adding those items that you listed
Yes.
to this year's proposed, or this year's proposed budget, but it's not approving the proposed budget.
That is correct.
Okay. So council is there second for that. Councilor Burrow seconds, and let's open up for discussion. And so if we can just kind of, I want to go back and make sure I have everything accounted for. So we're approving the additional personnel items that, with the, the funding for the staff positions, the two items for crime control PD request, the trail sign rebranding to use up those American Rescue Act funds, which are otherwise restricted from, from use. Adding money to the hot fund marketing so we can move forward with that project for sponsor highway. Uncommitting those open space and just making sure that it's applied towards the projects it's intended for. The approval of the hot fund grants to get the rebranding, so that's going to increase their hot fund request to the, the amount that's in the backup of the budget, just for the hot fund portion of it. Replacing the shed, funding for that. And then skipping nine, ten is moving to an eight, or in the operational reserve, we're going to add another two point nine, seven, eight million dollars to make that reserve an eighteen month, based on last year's revenues. Ten or eleven, which is doubling our infrastructure transfer to make it a million dollars, which would quicken the pace of reinvesting in that fund to add additional funds for future infrastructure projects. And then the other three are just, or the other two are just recommendations to study them, but not add additional funding. Okay. Let's get clear my mind. Let's go. Councilor Johnson, and then Mayor Protom.
For number nine, we're already, it's already funded at like thirty thousand dollars, and this was just pumped to forty?
Forty. This is, it's funded at forty thousand dollars, and then the request would put it to fifty instead of forty.
Are there like grants available for this kind of stuff? For prairie restoration?
Possibly. It would take some work to figure out what those grants would be, yeah. And this is, those are increases in the venue fund.
Right, so is this also something, I, I don't know what goes into prairie restoration? If, you know, I just see through the lens of what we do with the urban forestry. So is there like some blood, sweat, and tears from the community that can go into that as well? Or is that?
Yes, so there's a couple of different things. We've done some work and have some prairie restoration plans for at least three separate properties in the city. And we are doing some work with that through the Savannah Trail project as well. But we are, we will be coming back to council on the seventeenth with a task order for men to kind of move some of these projects in the area forward, including like grazing nozones, project for the, what we're calling like Sunset Valley Seed Seekers to get residents out and volunteer to kind of collect seeds and stuff so that we can kind of try to grow some more prairie plants from the stuff that we have here and kind of spread that. There's also the possibility for some, you know, work on invasive species, things that we would bring American Youth Works out for to kind of do that, or Texas Conservation Corps, to do some of that kind of work as well.
Okay, yeah, I, I think before we, before we up it, let's get some more residents getting in the game.
Yes.
And just let me know what it is. I'll be out there. But especially the invasive species stuff, you tell me to
Take something out?
Yeah, when you tell me to take like legastrom, you're like, eh, and I'm like, yes, ma'am.
And I actually have a volunteer, no, that's not necessarily prairie restoration. That's more like woodland kind of restoration and work. I have a volunteer from the Cherry Creek neighborhood who just reached out, who wants to come and help remove legastrom, so.
You just point me at the plant you want to go on.
Point you at the legastrom and it's gone.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Protom?
On item number ten, increasing the, the general fund reserve to eighteen months, I think we're going about that backwards. I think we should have the finance committee come up with some recommendations as to what they think the reserve should be and give their reasons why. And then we can consider it, as opposed to, let's make it eighteen months and then have them come up with a bunch of policies. Four years ago, please don't interrupt me. Four years ago, we had a once in a century pandemic, and we didn't touch our reserve funds. The only thing we've used reserve funds, as far as I know, is to fund facilities several years back. So I am confused as to what the purpose of the reserve funds is. And I would like for the finance committee to come in and weigh in and say, here's what the reserve funds are for. Here are our policies. Here are our guidelines on how we're going to use them. And based on those policies and guidelines, this is what the size of the reserve fund should be. So I would, I would like to see that go to the finance committee first. So we have some actual tangible policies other than just, we're going to have twelve months of reserves or eighteen months of reserves.
And, and just to clarify from staff, maybe Kyle, since the city administrators aren't here, but if we set money into an operational reserve, whether it's twelve or eighteen months, that's based, you know, financial policy is, is based on that, but it just takes a council action to override that? Like essentially, council can choose to, by action, use the reserve, right, independent of any, any policies. That's nothing preventing us other than just a vote. Is that correct?
I haven't pieced through the financial policies to try to answer that question, but as, as I understand, we don't really have a definition in the financial policies of when that reserve can be used. So I don't know that it states specifically that it would take council action to use, to draw down the balance below that. I'd have to look.
Okay. Again, we should have clarification on that, right? There should be a clear policy about what we do with that reserve fund.
Councilor Rosengard?
Okay.
I wasn't done.
Oh, my apologies. Mayor Protom, please go ahead.
Also on item number eleven, we've already agreed that we want to put five hundred thousand dollars a year in, in next year's budget for the infrastructure fund. And it's been recommended by staff that that is something we should do year by year. Whether or not future councils decide to do that is their decision. But since this is basically a fund for a long-term maintenance of our infrastructure fund, I don't quite see the, the purpose of adding another five hundred thousand to it. Especially because it encourages people to say the next year, oh, we did a million this year. We don't need to do it this year. We're back to not funding the utility infrastructure fund.
Councilor Rosengard?
Okay, the first one would be on the eighteen month general fund reserve. We used to be at eighteen months. The only reason we reduced down to twelve months is when we had to find money for the police building and the public works building. And then we changed policy to twelve months so that we could use that six months reserve to help fund those buildings. Budget and finance constantly tells me when I'm sitting there in the meetings that council sets policy, not us. And they're correct. We set policy. So we simply would set policy here on the council chambers, and we would then send it to the Budget and Finance Committee to rewrite the policy, the F, financial policy. I forget if it's one oh three. Then on the additional transfer to utility infrastructure, we have never set aside five hundred thousand dollars every year for infrastructure, never. We had a long-range financial plan where we set up a certain amount that would be set aside before we had extra money that council could u- use on projects. So we had like, it was like a seven percent in each year that would grow a little bit, like a hundred twenty-seven thousand, a hundred and ten thousand, seventy-five thousand one year and so on. So we have never set aside five hundred thousand for infrastructure. Our previous city administrator said all money should be in the general fund because that's the best way to run your city. If you ever get in dire straits, you have the money right there to utilize rather than tying it up. Because we fell behind on that, we didn't set any money up for infrastructure, and now we're talking about infrastructure again. By setting up the million dollars into infrastructure, we're playing catch-up. And that way, we're set for the next couple of years. Next year, we could do a hundred thousand. We don't have to do five hundred because we've never done five hundred in the past. But at least we would know that we have the infrastructure taken care of. At one point, we had a water main burst over at the market fair. Katie didn't even know where the lines were. She didn't realize there was a line right there. That set us back because we didn't have an idea that there was even a line there to be repaired. So you want to have all the lines accounted for and mapped out. And I don't know at this time if we ever mapped out all our lines, okay? Carolyn's saying yes. So that is why my recommendation of five hundred thousand, in addition to what the mayor's recommendation is, which is a minimum, as the mayor has reminded us, a minimum of five hundred thousand to set aside. So I added another five hundred thousand to that. As the majority of council, you could say another three hundred thousand, another four hundred thousand. I recommended another five hundred thousand. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion or questions from council? Before opening up to the public? All right, and let's hear from the public.
Melissa Gonzalez, twenty-six, Reese. I agree with Councilmember Rosengard about being, that finance will tell you that it's council's job and responsibility to create policy about how to do that. And I think that council should set up an agenda item for at least the basics of how to spend that money. Because it isn't the responsibility of finance committee, it's the responsibility of council, and they'll punch it back. And, and that happened numerous times because on finance. So I, I do think that that's worth an agenda item for, for council to discuss about how we should spend the reserves. That said, first time that we touched the reserves and we reworked them when we had an eighteen months policy was not on the building, but when we financed, when we did the infrastructure for at least Reese and whatever other street we did that. And we, we reworked what went there. Because there were a lot of things that were sort of duplicate, and so we cut which things were, and that was during Mills administration. And so, and, and so it went down significantly then, because it was like, like a flat eighteen months back then. And then we changed it during the Mills years. And then I don't think we touched it until the building. That's, that's my memory. But we changed it a lot during the Mills years. And, and I think there were some good changes there because there were things that were sort of duplicates. But we, but we lost, we, we took, we took a million dollars out of it at that time to, to do those roads as my memory is. And I think since it's a long-term memory thing, it's actually a solid memory. So, so I do think that you should make an agenda item for when reserves should be spent. That said, we know I didn't have a lot of confidence in the opinion of the previous city administrator, and no, I didn't think we should have not funded infrastructure. And I do think we should have used it and we should have had policies, but we didn't. And so I do think some number would do it, and it might be useful to, to make sure that when we're having budget discussions that we have that. It was a forty-year spreadsheet. We jumped it not thirty years, but forty years for when those pipes were going to be done. And, and so I think it's really useful to look at the history of that now forty-year spreadsheet to see what the changes were. But there were times that we jumped three hundred and four hundred thousand when something popped up. We never really sweated it because it was such a good system at the time that we never really fell behind because we just wouldn't do something. Because when Katie was here, we really did sort of stay ahead of things. So she didn't sweat it. So a previous member of the committee of, also at the time, was freaking out, and Katie was just like, it's okay, we'll just move it around. It, it was such a good and solid system. And, and there was, and we stayed ahead of it, that it didn't really matter. It wasn't a big deal that we were hitting a red line. We would just shift stuff. And that's what happens with good planning, is that we'll just shift stuff. So there isn't a panic, you know, we'll do it the year before, we'll spread it out about to three, but that's, that's the gift of good planning. And I think that, so, so I'm not overly concerned about it. I was concerned when we went significant years with the previous administrator, not putting it in, but now that we're back into good, solid policy, there isn't a reason to panic because we have flexibility. You know, if we don't do it at forty years, the city of Austin didn't do it for like eighty years when we were replacing some of those streets downtown. There was an extraordinary number. You know, we're using good policy and we're stretching to forty or something. You know, we're using good policy, and we're stretching to 40 or something. But I, when we did Fifth Street and Lamar, I don't know how long it was, but it was in excess of 50 years. And so there isn't the panic, just because we have a spreadsheet. So I just think, so those are my things, but really, put an agenda item for y'all to make the financial policies, and you can kick it back to budget and finance after you sketch out the ideas, you know? Each of you, just sketch out your ideas, and then kick it to finance, let them refine it. And I think that's how committees ought to work, but policy is y'all's job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Burton Pearson, 39 Pillow Road. I wanted to kind of revise the request that I made for the Prairie Restoration Funds a little bit. What I'd like is just the money that we didn't spend this year to be rolled over. This is money that's already been budgeted for Prairie Restoration work. And the reason we might need an increase over what P and E really discussed was that we didn't take into account David Mailer being in his low 80s. He is getting ready to retire here pretty soon, I think. And he is honestly one of the top Prairie Restoration people in the United States. He's done it for 40 years. He began before even Prairie Restoration was a thing. And he is, the members of the Prairie Restoration Subcommittee have walked these properties with David and with MEND, and the members of the Subcommittee are 100, well, are unanimously in favor of his involvement. So I wanted some extra money in case David does say, I'm retiring very soon, so that we might be able to expand some of the projects that we're doing, and get as much of his expertise involved in our restoration as possible. This will save money in the long run, because we'll be more effective, we'll be more capable of doing the job we need to do. So even though I know right now, we may not think we need that money, I'm concerned that he's going to be telling us he will retire relatively soon, and we might want to pick up the pace or find some way to get his knowledge really in there. And one way is to expand the test plots that we have planned to do, because we can get more information more quickly, he can give advice based on that information more quickly, and I think we'll have a chance to really do a little bit better job here, just in case he's going to retire. So all I'm asking for is whatever, I think Matt said maybe there was about 15,000 not used this year. I just would like that to be added to the Prairie Restoration Funds for next year. So it's not really an increase, it's just being able to use the money that's already been budgeted. And I really would, I think that's a wise decision at this point. Thank you for the consideration of that very much.
Thank you. All right, council for discussion or questions for staff? Mayor Breton?
I stand corrected by Councilmember Rosengarden and by Melissa about that council should make policy. And I think we should have an agenda item to discuss what the policy for the reserve fund should be. But that, I don't think that takes away from my general point is, why does it need to be 12 months, or why does it need to be 18 months? And I'd like to hear, for all of us to have that discussion and put out the reasons is, this is why, and this is what our policies are going to be for the reserve funds. Because right now, I don't think any of us know what that's supposed to be, or why it should be 12 months or 18 months.
Councilor Rosengarten?
The reason we had 18 months previously is because we are, as we are now, solely relying on sales tax revenue. And if sales tax revenue goes down dramatically, then we have a reserve buildup. Thank you.
Madicas?
So I have a question. Moving it, so it reminds me of my years in the nonprofit sector. When donations came in to a nonprofit, you could, the board could restrict those, but they were board restricted, which meant the board could unrestrict them by vote. So I think councils are the same way. If we have money in the reserve fund, whether it's 12 months or 18 months, council can make a decision to spend some of that money with or without policies, although I think it's a good idea that we set some guidelines and some policies onto how we would spend that money, you know, what's it for? But even if we don't make it 18 months tonight, that we're not losing that money. It's still in our general fund, right? So I mean, we could, if there was an emergency, we could use that money.
I believe that is correct. You know, I think that's something that our staff wants to make sure, but we set the financial policies, we set, you know, everything by council action. You know, so it's up to council that we could take that reserve and unreserve it, if there was a need to. It is just marking it differently, and the intention there is showing or demonstrating that the city is trying to, you know, contain the non-committed funds to a certain amount, essentially, right, the uncommitted funds. But, you know, you were out of the room, I think, Matt, when we asked Kyle, but essentially, it's if we put in a reserve, we can take it out of reserve. It's better to have a policy, like you said, but, you know, council can take that action.
I pulled up FP 317.
Yeah, could you read it?
Which is really, yes, sir. A general fund reserve has been established by the City of Sunset Valley to protect the city against an unexpected event that results in the city's inability to meet critical, essential, financial obligations. For example, a loss of all sales tax revenue due to a tornado that destroys the majority of the retail shopping area. The goal of the reserve fund is to reserve sufficient funds to keep the city operating for a time to allow sales tax revenues to be renewed.
Yep.
And this is a statement that's actually in FP 103. General financial policies should maintain, and where we get the calculation also, should maintain general government fund, general fund balance equal to 100% of budget revenue average for the preceding five years.
And so are we there with the 12 months?
What's in the mayor's budget is that it meets that 100%.
With the 12, yeah.
With the current budget, it meets the financial policy. But there's nothing in the financial policy or in our ordinances that say council can't unreserve that money, or override our financial policies, essentially.
It's like if, when we've gotten a donation, for example, for a trail from PGA for using the parking, that was restricted, they restrict it. So if the donor restricts it, or it's restricted by utility fund, or the crime fund, or the hot fund, it's restricted.
Right, if there's a legal restriction.
It's a legal restriction.
Right.
But, so, I mean, I don't, I think it's a good idea for us to really think about the policy and maybe develop the policy and then increase it, if we think that we need to, based on the policy and why we would use it. You know, maybe do a if-this, then-that kind of scenario for use of the fund. Just my thoughts.
Councilor Johnson?
I really like it calling out just, you know, sometimes we're talking about, oh, sales tax going away, but right there, like tornado just wiping it out, or, you know, I'd gone through Boulder, right off, well, kind of a little south of Boulder, just after those fires went through, and it was just, this freak thing, where just everything was just annihilated for about a mile. And either one of those two things is not super likely, but, you know, can happen around here, and how long does it take to rebuild those? And what other, how much building is going to be going on around here? So, I mean, it is just, I don't see a problem with putting it in there. Again, we could move it around if we wanted to. It's a signal. In some ways, like putting Uplands as park, to me, was a signal, you know? Everyone said, oh, you could do this, you could do that, whatever. It's just like, this is a signal that this is what we want to do with this. And if you want to do something else, make a good case. And so that's my signal, right there. I like that. 18 months. And when it goes into a statement like that, where it's like, it could just be wiped out, how long does it take? I mean, it's taken Leona almost a year to put up a restaurant, and they're not competing with all the rest of Austin for construction resources. So I'm happy with the 18 months.
Any further discussion? Okay, so just to make it clear what we're voting on, we're not voting on approving the budget. What we're doing is approving essentially these amendments to the budget that council can consider as part of the budget package. And the motion currently is to approve the additions of items number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 11, and then the recommendation is to recommend items number 13 and 14 to committees for further evaluation. And again, we're not approving the budget, we're just approving these, essentially these amendments to the budget, which we can then consider as a separate motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay?
Nay.
Okay, so doesn't, it doesn't mean that we can't change that again, right? Because we're, but it's giving council direction in terms of where we're at right now. So right now, the budget status quo is the mayor's budget plus those items we just approved. And that opens up for further discussion and further motions at this time. Councilor Rosengarten?
Additional discussion that I'd like to recommend is that the, when we talked about pervious versus impervious cover at Upper Cougar Creek, at the area, as recommended by Public Works Committee, I recommend that we do the impervious cover as they recommend it and save $220,000. I also recommend that any, as per budget and finance talked about this, any conceptual designs or schematic designs first be funneled down to specifics before we give it to, like, men collaborative. We have a budget set ahead of time, and we have maintenance already included as an estimate. So those two items, I would like to further discuss.
Is that a discussion, not a motion, right, at this time? It's just to bring this up?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so we've talked in council about this in the past, the combined CIP project. There's a possibility of doing change orders to reduce the cost of the Upper Cougar Creek portion specifically, as well as in the future, possibly other ones. So this would, you know, one of the things that council is considering is, you know, whether we move forward with some of the changes that could reduce the cost. There's some other changes that we're talking about, maybe combining with some of the other items, or other projects that have not been funded yet, like the turnaround water line that we did not approve bids for. And so, so council, we could take action now as part of our budget to say, we are going to move forward with impervious cover instead of pervious concrete. We don't necessarily have a cost for that right now, in terms of like what that change order would look like, but it could be adopted as part of the budget, so that it's giving council, or giving staff the direction that we want to make that change, and they will bring back the change order to us. And so that, I think that's, that's kind of the discussion point. The second is, as I understand it, Councilor Rosengarten, is that we want to get to a point with our schematic designs, that we actually have a full plan that we're, before we go into schematic designs, that we're giving that information to men, so that we can have kind of a broader vision, right, rather than possibly saying.
Opening the floodgate.
Or opening the floodgate. And I'm not sure, so from my perspective, and I'll let staff also weigh in on this, but once you have a schematic design, that's saying basically through construction documentation to a certain extent, right? Or is this, I mean, what would we call the Reimagined Brody that we got to initially? That was, was that a schematic design?
It's more of a concept plan.
Concept plan, yeah.
So what we are proposing in FY 25 would be getting more closer to a schematic design, doing the value engineering to try to get those costs down, and getting, I think we're going to like a 30% phase for construction documents. So it's kind of ending there, and then we would move forward with more detailed plans in the next year.
Yeah, I think that, to Councilmember Rosengarten's discussion points, these will be great discussion items for the next meeting. Unfortunately, Councilmember Brel will be absent, but we will be bringing the task orders for FY 25, both for men and Freeland Turk, and so we can dive a little bit more into those. And I think as a part of that discussion, we can continue, although, you know, we can certainly discuss tonight, but we won't be bringing, there won't be a task orders associated with the Smith project, but we can talk more about, you know, possible, you know, we do need to make, council does need to make a decision about what we're doing about the concrete.
Yeah, we'll probably have the information on the concrete available.
So typically, council, we also, when we're adopting the budget, we're also adopting like the contracts, the task orders. When I talk to the city administrator, I want to make sure that they have enough time to put together the right backup. So the intention is, the next meeting, what we'll be doing is, if we approve the budget, that doesn't mean that we are not, you know, council can't make changes to those task orders, to say, we want to make, you know, these changes to the impervious cover type, or we want to target, you know, a reduction, or, you know, make changes. It's just, you know, council can consider that tonight, but we're also getting another chance to do that at our next meeting as well. Councilor Rosengarten?
I'm sorry, someone else hit their hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Councilor Madicas.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't sitting close. So I just wanted to make sure, Planning Environmental Committee looked pretty extensively at, and had a pretty extensive discussion about pervious versus impervious concrete, and we did ask for more specific information on the difference, the pros and cons of each to review, and also like the environmental impact and any chemicals that are included in both products. So that's, I guess, Carolyn, is that going to P and E next week or this week?
No, because we're looking at the stuff for the benches and having that combined meeting, that's this week. So, and P and E didn't necessarily, they just wanted that information, and wanted to make sure we looked at all of that information. But we can definitely, we have time to possibly take some stuff to Public Works Committee, but P and E wouldn't meet before the next council meeting on that item.
But we'd have that at the council meeting where we're looking at task orders?
Yes, yeah, we should have that at the council meeting.
Okay, good.
Before we move forward, I do want to recognize that we have about 10 minutes left in our regular council meeting. If I could get a motion to extend that for up to an hour, not just saying that we need that full hour, I just don't want to run into a condition where we run out of time in our discussion, so.
You can do some, 10 minutes.
10 minutes? You want to, so, okay, we'll just keep plowing ahead, we'll see if you can do it. Councilor Rosengarten?
I move that we, I move that we use impervious cover at the Upper Cougar Creek to save $220,000 as recommended by Public Works Committee. I move that any conceptual designs or schematic designs be presented to council first, and that we work out an estimated budget and maintenance included before it goes to men collaborative or any other third party. And then I move that we approve the remaining amount of the budget.
Okay, make sure that that's clear. So the, the estimate for $220,000 savings is not finalized, we'll have to get that information from the exact engineers and the change order, so it's really making the recommendation that we move to impervious cover versus pervious cover.
You're right, you're right.
The schematic designs, I want to make sure the wording there is, because sometimes we ask mend and our engineers to develop schematic designs, and so we have to, before we send it to them, the wording, I just want to make sure it's, it's clear that we could be asking them to develop a schematic design, and then council reviews it, and then goes back to the engineers for the actual plan, right? So I just want, I want to make sure that we're not excluding us giving a task order to mend or the engineers to develop this.
If we so decide that we don't want any input from ourselves, from council, for instance, rather than what just happened with Brody, Reimagined Brody, and then $19 million, you're going, whoa, that was way off. Getting more specifics and saying, okay, what is the cost on each parcel? What is the cost of lights? And then from there, beside, what type of lights? And just focus on that. Or another example would be putting a building on a piece of property, just using that as an example, or putting a pavilion on a property. Two different things. So men collaborative could go down the path and say, okay, they didn't give me any direction, I'm going to put a building there. We're like, no, we didn't want a building, we just wanted a pavilion. You know? So give them more direction before we go down the path of doing a schematic or a conceptual plan.
The way I, the way that I would interpret that being is that when we review the task orders, council will be providing specific direction before we approve a task order, and that's how we would handle that. Is that, would you, would that be how you would interpret that, Carolyn?
Yes, we could, I mean, having some more direction from council regarding, I guess, the task. I think some of the task orders we were looking at, we were going to be presenting like three different options with costs that could be, you know, interchange between the options. So it was going to have more of a cost component in the kind of development of the schematic design versus kind of. of the schematic design versus kind of sky is the limit kind of thing, so that I think that's kind of where we are going with this, the task order that will be presented on the 17th.
Okay. So, there's a motion, is there a second for the motion? This is to, council is moving forward with not, or basically the direction is we are going to be using impervious cover on the uplands instead of pervious concrete, and that'll be a modification of the task order that's brought back as part of the next council meeting. Schematic designs as part of the approval process, council's going to be providing direction on those task orders before they are sent or approved for consultants or engineers, and then approving the remaining budgets, or the budget as we got to through those steps. Sorry, Councilmember Rosengarten?
I want to also make sure, I move that any water, wastewater and solid waste rates passed on to the city be passed on to the residents. I want to make sure that motion is heard loud and clear. That should be part of this.
Okay, so kind of combining all those things, it's reiterating that if we get rate increases from our, where we purchase water, that those be passed on as well?
That's right, because it wasn't mentioned in the last agenda item. Agenda item number six was not part of that motion, that was not made. So, I want to make sure that the understanding is this council agrees that water, wastewater and solid waste rates that are passed on to the city are then passed on to the consumer, whether it be residential or commercial.
Is there a second to open that up for discussion? Omnibus, yeah. No, it's separate things, but it's, you know, I think I understand the, you know, the motion, so I can restate it if that's helpful, but-
I'll second to discuss it further, I mean-
All right, so you've got four minutes to-
Yeah.
All right, so, Councilmember Johnson?
What's left in the, what's left to do with the budget?
This would, the motion is to approve the budget with-
Yeah, the motion is to approve, to adopt the budget with all of the changes that were just voted, to add in the changes that were just voted on with the previous motion. Another part of the motion is to approve concrete, regular con, as I understand it, regular concrete at the, at Upper Cougar Creek, I think. But it was Upper Cougar Creek, so the Savannah Trail Phase One, using traditional concrete versus using the pervious concrete. And with, you know, again, we have an estimate, but we're going to bring back other figures, but it's basically moving forward with that, so that's a part of the motion. I'm missing something else, too.
Hold on, this is going to sound like a ridiculous question, but what is, what was like the contract that we agreed to and then we could change with change orders? Was that the-
So, the, yeah, the $4.2 million award, so you can go 25% above, you can go 25% below. We're hoping to go, you know, we're hoping to change order out. But then there's additional projects we could potentially add in.
Wait, sorry, was, was Upper Cougar Creek in that one?
Yes, in the combined project, the main pieces of that are Upper Cougar Creek, so Savannah Trail Phase One, and then all of the repairs, street and bridge repairs to Ernest Rovels Way.
Okay, so of the-
And a tiny bit of work on my depot.
Of the $1 million we may try to, 200 grand could be taken care of with the-
With going to the-
P and E might want to talk about it? It's going to be on the-
And we don't know the cost fully yet. We have to get that change order, that information back from the contractor on what that cost saving is going to be, so we don't know if it's going to be 200,000, it could be 180,000, it could be something else. I mean, I don't, I don't have that information handy right now that I could say this is what it is.
Okay, I think we're trying to do too much in one motion, so I'm going to call the question.
All right, so all in favor of the motion to adopt the budget, move forward with impervious cover in the Upper Cougar Creek combined CIP project, the motion also included before schematic designs are contracted out, that council provides clear direction on the complete scope, including maintenance expectations and the full scope of the project, as well as reinforce that any rate changes that are from our, that we purchased water for are passing along to consumers, that wouldn't affect our current year, it would affect the next year, because those rate changes wouldn't go into effect until our contract with Austin, for example, wouldn't, it wouldn't change mid-year for us, right?
No, Austin is doing a cost of rate study for wholesale and commercial customers in winter and spring of FY '25.
So, it could possibly, we don't know the timing of that. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay?
Nay.
Okay, so, let's go ahead and make a motion to extend our meeting if we can.
Make a motion to extend the meeting-
For up to an hour.
Up to an hour.
Yep. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? I'm sorry, staff, we are, we get, this is a rare situation where we need to go, but that's why we do this. All right. All right, so let's go back to our discussion. I think maybe separating this out like you suggested is probably a useful next step if we wanted to move forward with that. There was a motion or further discussion, Councilmember Mettich, I saw your hand, oh, sorry, Mayor Pretten?
I think we're going to do the same thing, you go ahead.
Oh, well, so on the first piece of that with the concrete versus pervious versus impervious, I think it's premature because we don't have the data and we don't have the cost. Yeah, well, what's the difference is the pros and the cons that we asked for, so I'd like to have that in front of us so that we can make an informed decision that will affect our environment long term. So, I'd like, I'd like to do that when we have the information. That's how I feel about that one. The thing on the, I think we should be really specific on what we want in a schematic. Council should make the decisions about what we want to move forward with, but I really like the idea of bringing back in the schematic plan options where, you know, we could do this and it would cost this. We'd do this so we could select based on having that information about the expected cost of something, rather than just saying, we want to do this, and then it comes back and it's like, oh, we weren't expecting that kind of cost. So, I really like that kind of selection process in projects that we do. That, and I'm okay with utility rates.
Mayor Pretten?
I would like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance adopting and approving a budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2024, and terminating September 30th, 2025, and making appropriations for projects and accounts as we've discussed this evening.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve an ordinance adopting the budget. Based on the discussion, that includes the mayor's proposed budget plus the additional changes that were voted on and approved by council in the prior vote. That is in, opens up for discussion. Councilmember Rosengarten?
Does that include conceptual design being brought to council first before it goes out to a third party?
It's not part of the motion.
No, it's not part of the motion.
And does that, well, then I move that-
We have a motion on the floor.
Sorry, sorry. Does that include in the budget an amount for the concrete, whether it's impervious or pervious, concrete in the budget? Do we have a dollar amount estimated?
We have, we have a contract that we already awarded, so that, the line item in the budget funds that amount, the 4.2 million. We didn't add contingency, which we normally do. Again, we need more, we essentially just need more time to work out the change order, and as Councilmember Mettich said, you know, more information. Staff is preparing a recommendation, so staff will have, we've been talking with the engineers, so we do have, I don't think our recommendation's going to change, but we have a recommendation council can go with or against that, but we just, I don't think tonight is the night to make that decision.
Just to be clear, the current budget fully funds the contracts that we approved at a previous council meeting, which would be for pervious concrete per the original design.
If we didn't do a change order, it would be with pervious concrete, so.
Right, and so we can only go down, right, if we, if we change it. We're not going to go up if we, in terms of just that one change. Unless we, we want to dye it, you know, gold and purple. Councilmember Rosengarten?
I'd like to add a friendly amendment that before we pass the budget, that we add, any conceptual or schematic plans be given direction from council, specific before it goes to Men Collaborative or a third party, and that a budget be estimated and maintenance be included.
And staff, maybe you can weigh in on this too, but the way I would see that working again is that if there is a, you know, a task order that we approve or to send to Men for a development of schematic plan, they're going to bring back to council a schematic plan, possibly including multiple options if council directed that.
Right.
Before we go forward with the next stage in that process, you know, which would actually result in construction documentation, council would provide clear direction to say, this is our target scope, this is our target, we want to make sure we have those numbers.
Budget, maintenance and everything.
Right, so it's kind of this multi-step process where, you know, we may ask for a conceptual plan, but we may say we have a stronger vision when we get a schematic plan, we may, before we approve that, we have this next step of giving clear council direction on the budget and the maintenance costs that we estimate.
Yes.
So, Councilmember Mettich?
I feel like we're going right back where we just were, where we keep adding more things, and I thought we said we wanted to take these items separately, so there's a motion on the floor to approve the budget with the changes that we did on the spreadsheet, and I would like to see us get that done and then move to another motion that addresses other plans and then whatever else in the rate water and all that. I think it's cleaner to do it that way, so just my two cents.
I agree.
Okay, Councilmember Johnson?
Well, would we even be able to talk about those things? I mean, once the agenda item is cleared, I don't think we could. So, and maybe we don't want to talk about it right now, but-
I mean, it is related to the budget. But again, I think that, I mean, is this, is this more dealing with this specific budget or is this just a policy in general of council? I think you're one, I think you're, Councilmember Rosengarten, you're talking more about a general policy, maybe this is again a financial policy discussion rather than the budget for FY '25. I think you're, you're speaking to, you're not just talking about task orders for FY ' '25, you're kind of talking about all future projects, if I'm-
I can only make a decision for the next year. I can't make them for two years, three years.
So, I guess, to Councilmember Rosengarten's point, it is tied to this, to this budget and to task orders we're going to be looking at next, at the next meeting.
What did we do with the parks and open space? Where it was like, we passed it with a, or we accepted it with a note that said, we're not tied to it, so.
Well, we, yeah, I believe that was in the, so we added, so to, in the resolution that adopted the parks and open space plan, a clause was added that, you know, projects for individual properties would be brought to council and vetted by council.
Take a little-
Councilmember Rosengarten?
What if the motion that's on the table, that that be withdrawn, because once the budget is approved, it's approved with how it is already written, and that first, the conceptual motion that I'm trying to make, that makes sure that that is being stated, be stated and voted on, and then the one about water, wastewater and solid waste motion be motioned, I don't know how else to say it, and voted on, and then we go to the full budget is approved after that, because once the budget is approved, it's done.
Can I ask you something that doesn't have to be put into motion language, which is, I'm not even sure what you're trying to get out of the mend, amendment there. I'm sorry, I got up at 4:00 for a flight, and so-
Yeah, it basically, you're asking me?
Yes, I am.
It's basically trying to give direction before we have a runaway train. Reimagine Brody Lane became $19 million. We started with basically putting lights on Brody Lane and we ended up with all this other stuff, and I'm as guilty as anyone else, because we, I went to those meetings and they said, do you like this or this? So, in the future, as Budget and Finance recommended, that we first have main direction, maintenance included, an estimate of cost and a budget, so that we don't say, oh, you can go up to $19 million.
We gave a little bit of that kind of guidance last time with them, more so when it was communication with the residents, just saying, hey, these things aren't free, don't just, so hopefully if we can communicate to them that it sets themselves up for success, sets us all up for success when they're putting something together. I don't know if it's going to make it into an amendment, but I feel it.
So, next month, we're going to be, our next meeting, we're going to be approving task orders?
Yeah.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, so again, if your motion, council member, is tied to this budget, the only, the only projects in FY '25 that this would affect that we're talking about is Reimagine Brody Phase 1A. Again, we're approving the budget line item of 106,000, but we still have time to work on the task order and we'll be discussing that next meeting and approving that next meeting. And then the upland schematic design, these are the only two, so really your motion is dealing with those two specific projects. And already, I know, and I know you haven't seen it yet because we've got to get the final version, already in the upland schematic design, there's what Carolyn mentioned earlier where they're going to, you know, present options, right? Those cost options of, you know, kind of low, medium, high, or what did we used to call, bronze, silver, gold? So, yeah, so, so, again, if it's tied to this budget, the only two that this would affect, because all the other projects, they already have either, they're about to have construction documents or they're already bid, so.
So, I'd like to recommend the way of like moving forward this is that we are going to be approving task orders at our next meeting or reviewing and possibly approving task orders. I think that's obviously the time when we can shape those task orders to meet the specific needs of the project. What I'm hearing is that in general, having a policy or specific council, whether it's council policy or financial policy, to say, before we approve, moving forward with a project and paying money to a third party, we need to provide them with a clear, clearer guidelines, right, than what we did for Reimagine Brody, right? So that they, they can right-size it, even if that's saying, here's the three different right sizes, right, you know, something like that. So, my recommendation is that we talk about those two specific task orders next week or two weeks from now, and when we go through that approval process, we put any boundaries we want to at that time, but the financial, the larger financial policy really extends more than the fiscal year, something that this council, you know, you know, there's going to be a budget amendments that come in, there's going to be, you know, new projects come in. I think that's, we can also bring that up as an agenda item for next meeting and discussion, and that could be something that council just says, this council is not going to approve a project without these steps, so it'd give staff a chance to kind of make that language and some recommendations around that. So, I will commit to bringing that agenda item back to our next meeting so that we can have that discussion, even though we'll be missing one of the council members, because I think, you know, that would make me feel more comfortable that we have the right language in there and that we're also getting a chance to, you know, have staff give some time and thought about how that would work, given that we also, we want to make sure that we don't have that runaway project cost, you know, and then have to come back and say, no, 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 let's cut down. That's, that'd be my recommendation, and I will put that as an agenda in the next meeting so that we can move forward with some type of policy for this council, or even possibly revising our financial policies to reflect that. That'd be my recommendation, you know, Mayor Pretten?
I agree with the mayor's recommendation, and I would like to, recommendations, and I would like to call the question.
Okay, so, council could take the option of doing further discussion if they wanted to not approve the motion, that doesn't mean we're not done with approving the budget, but the motion as it is, is to approve the ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2024, and terminating September 30th, 2025, and making appropriations for projects and accounts as amended by the discussion and the approved items that council voted on previously. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Okay, and so I will be bringing back an agenda item to specifically talk about that, as well as, I think we can include in that the utility rate intention as well, just adopting that as a forward, so we can sure we-
We can make a motion right now.
It's one of these things that, like, we got through this item, so I don't know if we can actually, you know, do anything else on this, but I, but I will bring, make sure we bring that back at the next meeting. Okay, so council, we are now at the point where we can approve items that can be acted on consent and just- on consent, and just everything on this list is potential for approval. We have items eight, nine, and 10 that we can approve on consent, or if we wanted to only approve a subset of them, we can talk about those remaining items individually. Councilmember Rosengard.
I move to approve on consent agenda item number eight, number nine, and number 10.
All right, eight, nine, and 10, is there anybody who wants to pull one of those items from consent? She didn't include that in there. Yeah. Anybody want to pull eight, nine, or 10 from that list? Okay, is there a second to the, a motion to approve on consent, eight, nine, and 10?
Second.
All those.
We can have discussion on that.
Yeah, we can, we usually don't, but we can.
I know. What if we had the best attended council meeting ever on the same night of National Night Out? Could you imagine if it was just, okay, I know it's late, let's go.
We have a council meeting next to the food trucks.
Yeah. It's good to bring them in.
All right, all those in favor approving consent, item number eight, nine, and 10, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? All right, we approved on consent, the minutes from the August 27th, 24 called meeting. Item number nine, October 21st, October 1st, 2024, regular city council meeting, cancellation for National Night Out, which we hope all residents can come in and enjoy. And item number 10, approval in ordinance levying a $0 tax rate, as we have done for many, many years now. All right, that brings us to our final agenda item, which is item number 11, and I'll hand this over to city staff for introduction to this item.
Do I need to introduce, or can I just ask council for questions?
Well, so I, just real quickly, so we, these are, there's a revised position for the community and event coordinator, which is the updated language that, that myself, city staff, and council medicus, councilor member medicus contributed to. There is the new position for the admin assistant, and then there is the revised revisions to the, the trail patrol community resource officer position, as well as revised pay ranges for all full-time, non-step and non-contractual positions, which is in the backup.
Yes.
So, Councilmember Rosengard.
So the questions are, the, the job description differences on communications and events coordinator versus the communications and engagement coordinator.
Yes.
I do not agree, this is not a question, I do not agree that they should be assisting in solving neighborhood problems. I think that would be more of, if that's a disagreement between two neighbors, that should be someone who's HR or should be chief if there's, for instance, what happened before, the Meadows, and two neighbors with their dogs fighting each other. And who is now going to be doing the grant writing? When you changed the job description, you removed grant writing totally, so who's going to do grant writing now?
So grant writing, I mean, that, that was a recent addition to the CEC position. That wasn't in the original, and it was added, and so there, there will not be a specific person that handles grant writing, but as the city did for many years, it would be to whoever the, you know, the most appropriate staff member who has the bandwidth or the knowledge or expertise, or if additional outside help is needed, you know, the city could contract for that grant writing support. The, the task, the neighborhood solving, that was in the old job description, it's not in the current job description.
I sworn that was in the new one.
Or is it in the general statement? No. Yeah, that was in, I believe, yeah, that was in the old, that was in the old when it was communications and engagement. So seek to, I think it's in, so, yeah, page 61 is what you, oh, problem solving, finding resolutions, that was, page 61 of 72 of the packet, that's the old job, that's the old job description, and then, yes, but yes, you are correct, grant writing is, is taken out of the position. The position is focusing on, focusing more on communication, specifically digital communications, and focusing more on event coordination.
Okay.
So grant writing would, you know.
I see the grant writing, and where is the other?
Marked draft.
Solving neighborhood problems, okay, go back to that now. Also in the, yes. Also, just so.
Is, and just to clarify, is that in the new position, or is that the old, the old version?
Because some things are disappearing from the old one to the new one.
Yeah, the intention between, with the new job description is that, like the city manager said, is that we're really trying to focus on communication, especially digital communication management, that means managing social media accounts, that means managing the city website, as well as event coordination and make sure that's explicit in the job description, and referencing also being the person who oversees or oversees coordination for Art Fest. And so it's really trying to narrow it in on the fact that we want this position to be the person who's coordinating, you know, the city events that are benefit to the residents, and as well as the communication, where we have a gap right now in terms of like who's managing our social media, who's really doing the analytics, who's really doing the, you know, the graphic over, design oversight, those, those areas as well, who's writing up the communications, you know, that might go out, you know, to the different press or businesses that are part of the city. Well, Councilmember Rosengard is looking at information, are there any other questions to staff about this, anything else on this agenda item?
In the admin report, there was that sheet that Danielle had, that was, that was like.
Retail occupancy.
Retail occupancy.
Yeah, there were no updates, I mean, but we will be continuing that, Jerry.
I loved, loved that.
Yeah, that's a great report, so we'll, we'll be continuing, there were just no updates to add this month, but.
With the Lego store, I mean, not Lego store.
Yeah, bricks and minifigs, yeah, I mean, there were just no changes because we had what was coming soon, so I should have put that, sorry, no changes.
Oh, no, I just want, I.
That, that report's not going away because CED loves it too, so.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Rosengard.
Yes, I was looking at the correct one, the new one, and the other concerns were that they now have to join every CED Arts Commission and P and E Committee. In the past, they did C and D and Arts Commission, and they have to go to council meetings. In the previous one, it was as needed, now it's they have to go to them. So I'm worried that it's a bit much.
The as needed is part of that last bullet, it goes.
I know in one, let me make sure.
There it is, yeah.
Yeah, so attends and participate in various public meetings as needed, and yes, the intention is not to go to every, all of those meetings, because that is a lot, but the, the intention is to go if, you know, a main, a main agenda item is in event planning that this, this individual, you know, would attend to help coordinate with that, or, you know, maybe the committee can, you know, plan the event themselves and then just contact the individual saying, you know, hey, we're, we're going to need this, because that can happen too. So it is, it is intended as an as-needed basis, not, they're not expected to go to every single one of those, those meetings. But those are the, those are the committees and commissions that, that are involved with, you know, with events and community programs.
And certainly some periods of time might be more intense, for example, Arts Commission planning Art Fest, that's when this person would probably be a lot more engaged with that committee versus, you know, other times of the year when it's, when what they're doing is really pre-work or, you know, the, the event planning work, and then Arts Commission's actually talking specifically about, you know, that is an agenda item, so. But there's also times when they need to come to council and present, you know, information like, like to council for various updates and reports.
Yeah, and this position would also not be necessarily the staff, it's not pigeonholing the position to be the staff liaison for these committees, it just means they may participate, so, yeah.
And then the position of the administrative assistant, who is doing that work now?
So the work now is being handled by our administrative staff, so our city secretary has to essentially be the receptionist at times, also Lori Utility, excuse me, the utility billing and accounts payable clerk also has to function as this role, and we've been utilizing interns also to serve. So we had an intern that's, that had been working with us over here in City Hall, and then we had another intern assisting the development services manager. This administrative assistant greatly reduces the intern line item, and that administrative assistant is not only, I know there was a comment about providing administrative support to the city secretary, which, you know, I believe she needs, but it's also, this position also will serve as administrative assistant to the development services and help him with scheduling and answering permitting questions and development questions, so it's really providing administrative support to the entire administration department, so.
Do we have a lot of development services?
Yeah, I mean, I would say, do we have a lot of development services?
Right.
I would say most of the calls and inquiries that come in are related to permitting, be it residential, commercial, you know, zoning questions, yeah, that, there's a lot. But again, given our unique nature, I don't think we have enough, we don't have enough permits to warrant a full-time permit clerk, so that's why this position, again, it's a little bit of everything, permitting, development services, court, yeah, cross-trained. We're looking for an individual that can, willing to be cross-trained in many areas.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve amendments to the job descriptions, including communications and events coordinator and trail patrol, community resource officer, revised pay ranges for all full-time, non-step and non-contractual positions, creation of an administration assistant position for the administration department.
Okay, this motion, is there a second for that?
Second.
Councilmember Johnson, second. Further discussion on this item? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? All right, council, I appreciate you approving that item, I think it's going to improve the services that we provide as a city, which is one of the most important things that we can do, and hopefully staff also, you know, can take the benefit of that and, you know, allow us to do other projects as well that we've been putting, putting off for the time being while we've tried to make sure that we provide basic services. Council.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second for that?
Officer Brownlow, welcome to full-time again.
All right, yes.
Thank you, council.
Are, all those in favor rejoining, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? All right, we are adjourned at 9:26 PM. Thank you, council, thank you, staff. It's always one of these magical moments, we have an approved budget, we have, I appreciate everybody's marking to make that.